Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order, December 4th. If you could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Marks.
Salute the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you could remain standing, please. We have an invocation by Pastor Greg Quirk.
Good morning, Mayor. Good to see everybody today. Hopefully, this is the right microphone. All right. Well, let's pray before we begin.
All right. Good. All right. Thank you, Ty. Well, Father, as we live in this world that's filled with chaos, let us remind ourselves during this season that you were born amidst chaos, and you brought a message to that was tremendous hope for all mankind. And so during this Christmas season, may we be reminded, as the angel's prayer was, that it would be our own for this world. They said, "Let there be peace on earth and goodwill towards men." And so, Lord, I also ask, as always, bless this council in all that they do and all the business that they have on the agenda tonight, that it would reflect the values and traditions of our city. We give it to you in your name. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, everyone, be seated. Item 1.4 and 1.5, City Clerks' Report on Posting the Agenda and Roll Call.
Yes, Madam Mayor. The agenda was posted on November 30th at 4:00 p.m. Councilmember Armendaris?
Here.
Councilmember Barco?
Here.
Councilmember Klein?
Here.
Councilmember Hilton is absent. Councilmember Marks?
Here.
Councilmember Tovar?
Here.
And Mayor Blankley?
Here. All right. Under orders of the day, we have none. Item 1.7 is Employee Introductions. We have two, starting with Community Development. Sharon Goy.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers and members of the community. I would like to welcome our newest member of Community Development Department, our Office Assistant, Mariah Magonda. She comes to us with a background in property management and research, helping to oversee 400 properties, and she was responsible for dealing with the code enforcement aspect of that. So that's perfect for us. She has experience working with local government to obtain permits and inspections. And she just got her degree in sociology from San Francisco State earlier this year. And while she was there, she worked as a research intern, collecting data, analyzing data for peer-to-peer mentorship program, and that has been really successful. It got implemented school-wide. So let's welcome Mariah.
Thank you, Sharon, for the kind introduction. I'm super excited to be here at the city of Gilroy, and I look to make an impact and hopefully grow with the company as well.
Thank you. Okay, Adam? Yes? The next one?
Good evening. Jessica Gaeta is the new Office Assistant for Recreation. Jessica has been working part-time in the Recreation Division since 2018, when she was a senior at Christopher High School. She's attended Gavlin College and is in her final semester at San Jose State, where she's majoring in Spanish. Jessica knows recreation really well. She's been involved in almost all of our programs, seniors, adaptive camps, after-school program, and more. Jessica, who is fluent in reading, writing, and speaking in Spanish, will be overseeing the day-to-day Recreation Office operations. Outside of work, you can find Jessica walking her dog, going to watch the San Jose Sharks, win or lose, and hanging out in Santa Cruz. Please join me in welcoming Jessica.
My name is Jessica, and I'm very excited to continue working with the Recreation Division. Thank you so much for the opportunity, and I really appreciate the kind words that Adam himself also said about me. And I'm just really looking forward to continuing to grow and support the Recreation Division.
Thank you and welcome. Okay, that brings us to ceremonial items. 2.1, which is a proclamation for Arbor Day. So I'm going to meet Luis Ramirez at the podium, who is the Chair of our Parks and Rec Commission. This goes back to 1872, when the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, I, Marie Blankley, Mayor of the City of Gilroy, together with the Gilroy City Council, on this fourth day of December 2023, do hereby proclaim December 6, 2023, as Arbor Day, when I present this to our Parks and Rec Chair. Now, if I'm allowed, we're going to sit.
Thank you. Yeah. So I'm really excited about this Arbor Day. It's, you know, it's part of Tree City USA, where it doesn't mean a city. This particular, it's December 6th, so it's Wednesday at 2:00 p.m. We invite, of course, all the city staff and administration, city council members, the general public as well. We're planting trees and some really nice trees, thanks to Greg Bozo and that little small company called Google. We've got some really beautiful trees that are coming in at the Heartland Dog Park, sorely needed. It's going to be really beautiful, so we invite the public and hope you can join us. Thank you.
Okay. And next is an annual presentation by the Personnel Commission that's going to be given by Vice Chair Marissa Haro.
Good evening, City Councilmembers and Mayor. We're really excited to be here. My name is Marissa Haro, the Vice Chair for the Personnel Commission, and like the mayor said, I'll be giving a presentation on the annual report for the Personnel Commission. The commission is made up of five members, as you can see reflected on the screen. Nita Eddie Mitchell is our chairperson. I, Marissa Haro, am the Vice Chair. We also have Commissioner Catherine Cummins, Robin Bronze, and a vacancy. Please note that the term for Robin Bronze expired at the end of late 2022. However, due to a vacancy, she has willingly remained on to ensure that the commission has a quorum. The role of the Personnel Commission is governed by Section 907 of the City Charter. We act in advisory capacity in preparing, revising, and maintaining the classification plan and the Human Resources Rules and Regulations. We also hear disciplinary appeal hearings and grievance hearings. We meet monthly on the Fourth Monday at 5:30, and we only meet when there are items for review. In 2023, we have met a total of six times. So some of our accomplishments for 2023 include: we have reviewed, provided input, and approved five existing job descriptions, seven new job descriptions, one employee reclassification, eight salary range placements, and prior to the commission reviewing these items, the union completes their own review and provides feedback. In 2023, there have been 65 recruitment processes, 899 employment applications, 66 new hires, 47 full-time, and 19 part-time, 14 promotions, and most, if not all, of the commissioners have assisted in the hiring process for some of these recruitments. We've also received various training in various areas, thanks to the help and coordination of Leigh Anne McPhillips, the HR Director. Some of these include best practices for HR rules and regulations, best practices for classification and compensation, Gilroy Open Government Ordinance, employee law, administrative hearing procedures, harassment, discrimination, and retaliation prevention, Board and Commission Handbook. We have not had any grievance or discipline appeal hearings conducted this year, and earlier this year, we updated the bylaws to adjust the meeting schedule from the Second Monday to the Fourth Monday of each month. And we are in the process of getting ready to update the Gilroy Human Resources Rules and Regulations, which is planned to take place in 2024. And that is our presentation. So at this time, if there are any questions, please let us know.
Thanks. You have been busy. Any questions, Council? Oh, thank you. Thank you very much for that presentation. Okay, moving on to item 3.2, which is the time on the agenda to speak on any item, not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the City Council. I see three speakers on my board. Is that correct?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay, then Donald Perino, you'll be first, right up here. Three minutes, followed by Ron Kirkish, followed by Stephanie Ellie.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Pedro Espinosa, and all you City Councilmembers. Two weeks ago, Ben Papani's wife, Loretta Papani, died. He was a commissioner under Gilroy Handicap in the 80s and 90s, never got what he wanted. He still has that boy, but his wife passed away two weeks ago, Loretta Papani. Going to what I was going to talk about. The water, while the city charges in January, when you have a credit card on file, a fee, or if you take it out of your bank account, there's a fee. Now, I was informed that PG&E charges you to do this, but you don't see it. But the one mayor that I know somebody checks with did similar thing with our water, raise the water. I don't know if it's Valley Water raised it, but we had a raise in the water. Before you open your faucet, you have a higher rate. It's a level, and it was put on there. And I don't think the people that you have hired to do the credit card or the bank checking account is not good. I think you should do it yourself and don't charge the public. PG&E doesn't do it. Citibank doesn't do it. All our people do not charge. I'll use that there. The final thing. If I can think of what it was, there's two things I was going to talk about. Oh, yes. I've been informed that EV vehicles, electric-driven vehicles, melt up at these places like that pick up cars that have malfunctioned, and many of them are EVs. The people that pick them up, the car like Deon and Marks, a majority of the vehicles are EVs. I suggest the city get hybrid. They go farther and don't break down like EVs, and EVs are no good. I told my wife when I kicked the bucket, get a hybrid but not an EV, because you'll never be out without gasoline and power, because a gasoline be charging your battery. So you don't have to charge it with PG&E.
Thank you, Don. Thank you. All right. Next speaker is Ron Kirkish.
I agree. I like hybrids, too. Every year, we have City Council meetings, twice a month. 12 months, that's 24 meetings typically, plus or minus sometimes. Tonight, we see another empty seat on the days. This individual now has missed 19 meetings. Every year, we have 24 meetings. Within the last three years, this individual has missed 19 meetings, nearly a year's worth of meetings that have been missed. In actuality, when you pencil it out, that is over one quarter, or 25%. It's 26.5% of the meetings he has missed, more than one every four meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Stephanie Ellie.
Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers, and my apologies to Director Goy for not letting her know I was coming up here to speak beforehand. I'm coming to you regarding an email I received from Zach Hilton, Councilmember Zach Hilton. I'm disappointed he's not here tonight. In this email, all recipients are BCC'd. I don't know who received the email, but I know at least two other commissioners also received it. And Madam Mayor, I also received your email, talking about the planning commission functions. I did supply you with a copy tonight for those who do not have it. I feel like this email lacks transparency and doesn't encourage collaboration. I've spoken to just about everybody on the Council, aside from Councilmember Tom Klein in the past, as he's new, and I haven't come before him with anything. I feel that everybody, including Zach, has been very helpful, but I've received several emails from Councilmember Zach Hilton where I'm BCC'd on, and that makes me feel very uncomfortable. This letter discusses our duty with regards to dissolved commissions that were rolled into the Planning Commission in 2022, and I wanted to remind him that there was supposed to be a handoff and transition plan for our responsibilities and duties. The Planning Commission has asked several times for that handoff to take place, and this is my apologies to Director Goy, because this was before her time. And most recently, when I asked, I was told by legal counsel that they were unaware of any transfer of duties in session. So at the end, there were three questions posed, and just for transparency, I'm answering them, replying here. Over the past year, how have you incorporated, oh, how have you incorporated the Complete Streets policy requirements into your project reviews? We have incorporated them. I'm not, you know, going to sit down and identify every single thing that we've done, but we've incorporated those policies, and those recommendations have been discussed and added to items brought before the City Council. Question is, do you think that Planning Commission is composed of bicyclists and pedestrians in order to provide comprehensive recommendations to staff and City Council? Not really sure what's being asked here, but I am a bicyclist and I am a pedestrian. I also drive a vehicle. And then, are you receiving enough professional development and training opportunities to fulfill all your duties? We have had many opportunities for training. They're very good. The planning team and staff are very good at letting us know that those are available. But I also want to remind him that the budget request was cut by council. Finally, I think there's a better solution for transparent communication, rather than sending a BCC email, and I would like to see that we meet annually with City Council, and I look forward to interviewing with you for next week, next week from my position. Thank you.
Thank you. For the record, the letter I sent to the Planning Commission was to tell them that our council norms denounce that behavior. Nobody is supposed to be emailing all of the, all of our commissioners with their singular interpretation of what their duties are and what they should be doing, and it's happened before, and it's not something we can seem to stop, except to keep calling it out. And so I wanted the commissioners to know that that was not supported by the City Council. They did not need to respond to it at all if they chose not to. Okay? All right. Does that conclude public comment?
I have no other speaker cards for this item, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And that brings us to Councilmember Reports. Councilmember Barco.
Councilmember Barco.
Councilmember Armendaris.
Thank you, Mayor. So we had no meetings, but I just did, I did want to take the opportunity to thank the Gilroy Downtown Business Association. This weekend was the holiday parade, and I know many of us participated in. It was very fun, lively, and like, it was the most well-attended parade I've seen in downtown since I was a kid. And so it was, I just wanted to give hats off to all the volunteers and staff of Downtown Business Association for a great job.
That's all. Okay. Councilmember Marks?
Yes, Gilroy Gardens had their annual retreat a week ago, and we planned what was, what projects would be worked on over the next upcoming years, and I have to echo Councilmember Armendaris's comments. That was a terrific parade. It took a lot of planning, but we really had a lot of people present, and it was very worthwhile.
Thank you. Do you want to share the upcoming projects from Gilroy Gardens?
We're talking about, because they're starting a foundation, and with money that's coming in from the foundation, we look forward to putting in, you know, some water rides, some new rides over the next few years, or many years, because they're very, very expensive. This next year, Lakeside will be up and running. Uncle John's Restaurant will be up and running. We voted to complete those two projects for this upcoming year, and that's about it.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Hilton is absent, so Councilmember Klein?
Yeah, I wanted to give an update on one of the boards I serve on. I'm going to read from this, so I might not make eye contact out there, but it is the Silicon Valley Regional Interoperative Authority. Chief Espinosa represents the Santa Clara County Police Chiefs Association on the Working Committee. Chief Espinosa has been an excellent contributor and can speak to the great work of SVRIA. That's short. So SVRIA represents the radio communications interest of public agencies in Santa Clara County. SVRIA facilitates daily local and regional interoperable communications for our JPA, PA, excuse me, members and participants. SVRIA is made up of every city in the county except Los Altos Hills, the County of Santa Clara, and most special districts, including VTA, Water District, and South County Fire. The radio system handles nearly 65,000 radio transmissions each day, or about 23.5 million per year. There was not a single instance in the last year where the radio system was busy and users could not access radio communications. Both Gilroy Fire and Police Departments use the system on a daily basis. Nearly 12,000 radios operate on the system, and another 8,000 mutual aid radios are authorized to use the system. Mutual aid partners include CHP, CalFire, and federal law enforcement agencies like the FBI, US Marshals, and the ATF. Inoperable talk groups allow agencies outside of Santa Clara County, or agencies in other areas of the county, to communicate with one another on large incidents. SVRIA's annual budget is approximately $5 million. In 2011, a competitively bid contract was awarded to Motorola. The system cost nearly $90 million, and it was paid for by grant funds and general fund contributions from SVRIA members. An 11-member board is the Legislative Oversight Committee. Gilroy shares a rotating board seat with Morgan Hill. Accomplishments over the last year include the implementation of a radio system performance management program, completed a physical and cybersecurity assessment of the system designed to improve protection and resiliency, added mutual aid cooperators, added San Jose International Airport operations to the radio system, and completed the first-ever strategic planning session to support the long-term capital infrastructure funding and lifecycle replacement of the current system in approximately 10 years. Again, if you have any questions, Chief Espinosa would be the one you want to ask about, so thanks.
All right. Councilmember Tovar?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try not to repeat anything that my fellow councilmembers said, but again, I want to thank the GDBA for the work that they did on, you know, the holiday parade, not only, the feedback I got was that the city was very supportive, so I appreciate the city's work on that. It's great to see our fire department out there leading the parade, and it's great to see so many people out at the local restaurants, businesses. So again, to the GDBA, thank you for your work. December 9th, from 2:00 to 4:00 at the Downtown Papa Park, we're doing a Christmas giveaway for families in need. If you want to come by, invite folks. We're giving away tickets, toys, gift cards, and food, so that'll be December 9th from 2:00 to 4:00 for families in need. Santa Claus will be out there and try to make some joy for some folks. That's it.
Okay. Last Monday was the grand opening of South Valley Middle School, the rebuild. Wow. Then Saturday was the holiday parade. Double wow. And really, the magnificence of that parade was the people who came. It was just the, all of you, people who came. That's really what it was. And then I attended a Caltrain policy group meeting. Eh, not as wow as the other two things, but it was a good effort by Caltrain. What I do want to share is they're trying to get representatives from all the cities on the corridor, from San Francisco to Gilroy, and they did that. And we had a two-hour pow-wow meeting, breaking out in small groups, trying to assess each city representative's ability to contribute, or perceptions, or contributions, I guess I should say, on all of the grade crossings. Some have things that go over and that they don't want them there, and others want at grade crossings to be separated. But no matter how you look at it, it's going to be a difficult task, because it's San Francisco to Gilroy, and Gilroy and Morgan Hill are the only ones along portions of the track that are not owned by Caltrain. Union Pacific owns the tracks, South Atanian, that is just a fact, as it is today. So that is my report, and we'll move on to Council Correspondents. We have a letter in our packets. As we all know, we're trying to get county ambulance response to improve its time. That's in the packet. Also in the packet is Councilmember meeting attendance, so that everybody can see exactly by meeting what Councilmember attendance is. All right, Consent Calendar. Is there anyone wishing to remove anything from consent? Oh, did I skip six? Oh, future council-initiated items, sorry. Anything there? Okay. Anybody want to remove anything from consent? If not, then I'll go to public comment. Do we have any members of the public?
No public comment, Madam Mayor.
Okay, closing public comment, and then...
For approval?
Fred Tovar has, Councilmember Tovar has moved approval.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Barco, and we can vote.
Councilmember Daris?
Yes.
Councilmember Barco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley?
Yes. All right. That's unanimous with one absent. Okay, 7 point, sorry, 8.1. Bits and Proposals. Approve the purchase of a modular replacement restroom for Christmas Hill Park and authorize the city administrator to execute related purchase documents. And this will be Carl Biarkey giving us this report.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Carl Biarkey, our interim Public Works Director. I've got three items in a row for you. Two of them are construction-related, and the third one is consultant. So the first one up is the, we're replacing a bathroom at Christmas Hill Park. Oops, that's right. Got to get that. Thank you, Leigh Anne. A little background, the city's goal has been to minimize maintenance in our city parks, and that means protecting against regular wear and tear and vandalism. In fact, we have a project in our Approved Capital Improvement Program. It's a five-year, funded $350,000 a year to replace bathrooms in our parks. Recently, actually earlier this year, the restroom at Christmas Hill Park burned severely, and it essentially totaled. And so we're proposing to replace that with a modular restroom, and we find that the modular restrooms are the most economical way to replace these restrooms. They're, you can get them done quicker. They're made of very durable and fire-resistant materials, and we've gone to Sourcewell to provide a competitively bid purchase for that. This is a picture of the restroom soon after it burned, and this is how it looks today. We cleaned the pad, and we've got a fence around the site. And the new restroom is going to be similar to one that we have over at Miller Park. This one was installed in 2016. I should point out that these, these look perhaps like wooden buildings, but they're actually made of concrete. They're like five, four-inch, five-inch-thick concrete, the roof and the walls. And so I'm closing with the recommendation to approve the purchase of a modular replacement restroom for Christmas Hill Park and authorize the city administrator to execute related purchase documents. And that's all I have. I'll take any questions.
All right. Thank you. Unless someone has a burning question, I'd like to go to public comment first. Anybody from the public?
No speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay, closing public comment. Councilmember Tovar?
Thank you. Thank you for that. Uh, going back, can you, can you share with the public what happened to the actual restroom and why it has to be replaced?
The, uh, the restroom burned?
No, I, I know it burned, I'm just asking, how, how did it happen?
Oh, I, I'm, I'm not sure. I assume it was at nighttime, uh, we don't, I don't really know how it burned.
And then, um, Sourcewell, is that a, um, a company throughout the U.S.? Any, is it local or where, where are they?
Yeah, Sourcewell, that's a, that's a good, that's a good question. Sourcewell is...
It's a question I ask every time we do a contract, so...
Oh, okay.
I'm asking if it's local or not.
Uh, they are not local.
All right, go ahead, finish. I mean, so, are they the only company that we could have went with?
Sourcewell is a, is a way to expeditiously get these contracts. They, they competitively bid, they've got a whole range of, uh, of different types of, uh, you can buy equipment, uh, services, uh, construction work, and they've got a big menu, so we went to them.
But they're not local.
They're not local.
Thank you.
Sourcewell is a procurement service. Councilmember Armandares, yes. Yeah, okay, thank you. They're a service, they're not the actual contractor that creates the restrooms. Right, so we go to them to find ways to buy stuff.
Thank you.
So my question is about the actual restroom. Are there pictures or schematics of the inside? Like, do the restrooms have doors? Do they have mirrors and soap dispensers?
Uh, yes, there, I, I don't have one for you tonight, but it's essentially, um, this restroom will be, it comes in two, it's, it's, one modular has two parts to it, uh, and two restrooms, and they're unisex restrooms. We packaged for this project two modulators back-to-back. One of them will have the two restrooms, the other one will have only one restroom and a, um, storage area. So that's why we're calling it a three-stall or a, yeah, three-stall restroom.
So there's a total of three stalls?
Total of three, yes, and in a, and a little storage room to make up the, the four units.
Okay, and previously, the, um, the, the number of restrooms there was greater. Now, it was in that particular, that particular restroom...
In that particular one that burned, I, I don't have an answer for you.
I think the women's had three or four, three stalls, right, including a ADA one. And will they both have ADA stalls on both sides?
Yes.
Or will there just be one?
Yes. But, both, both sides.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Bracco?
Yeah, it, it doesn't really make sense to put a smaller restroom than we had there originally. I mean, we didn't have enough before. This is going to cause a huge problem, only having a three-stall restroom out there.
The, one thing that we, uh, Mr. Bracco, we have to remember is that we're putting it in the same footprint, and the previous bathrooms were most likely not ADA compliant. So we take the same footprint, we say, what, how many bathrooms can we get in this? And that's what we purchase.
Wouldn't now be the right time to put a bigger pad so you could put something that's going to last?
Well, we could put a bigger pad in, uh, it would take away some park space and add to the cost. So we're trying to do this economically. I mean, this is also not the only bathroom in the park, so there are three other bathrooms as well, or two other ba, one, two other bathrooms.
Two on that side?
Two on this.
One on the right side.
One on the left side.
All, all three of these stalls are ADA? Uh, Carl, I have a question.
Yes.
What date, in the staff report, it doesn't say what date, um, the city contacted Sourcewell to seek a competitive bid. It was sometime after these bathrooms burned down, so sometime after February. But about when did we begin the process to replace the bathrooms?
I want to say we probably started in July or August.
Okay. And then here we are today. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Anything, anything else on the timeline? Like, how long, uh, if we approve this?
Uh, we anticipate this to take about three months, three, four months to get installed. So it'll be next spring.
Spring.
Or the summer, yeah.
Do we have the unit that...
Pardon?
Do we have the, the material? I mean, the, the units?
If this is approved tonight, we'll place the order and then they'll manufacture units and deliver them.
Got it. Of course. Yeah?
The other thing is that, um, I should remind everyone is that this, the bathroom burned down, our insurance is covering the cost of that loss, so, um, our insurance provided some funding for this as well.
Jimmy, sorry, so with your comments, going back to Councilmember Bracco's comments, you had mentioned if we, we go larger, it's going to, it's going to cost more, but you just said that our insurance is covering it, so help me understand that piece.
Well, they're, they're not going to, if we decide to make larger bathrooms, I don't think our insurance is going to cover that. They're going to cover the loss we, we had from the wooden building being burned down.
Yeah, they won't cover you, your ability to make something better than you had before. Yeah.
How long did it take for the insurance...
Councilmembers, let's, let's, okay, Councilmember Marks, go ahead.
How long did it take for the insurance company to, uh, approve the cost and, and respond to the city?
I don't think I have an answer for that.
Let's ask our risk manager, Leanne McPhillips, who helped with the claim.
Yeah, it's been too long.
Councilmember Marks, we opened a claim right away when this incident occurred, and then, um, we have an active open claim. Uh, they are aware of it. Until we get them our final cost numbers, they won't, they can't reimburse us. So as soon as we have our final numbers of what it's going to cost to replace the restroom, what they like restroom, then we'll submit that, that, that cost paperwork to them and then they will reimburse us. So we've had the claim open since the time that the incident occurred.
So what was taking so long to get the numbers to them?
Well, we explore, we were exploring a lot of, uh, options on, on this restroom. It wasn't, this wasn't the only choice that we were looking at. We were looking at different types of restrooms that we know have been successful. So there was a, there was a period of trying to explore and find the best options for the restroom.
Okay.
Okay, I guess just from my own personal point of view, I would just like to see things happen a little bit sooner because the public was without a restroom all summer. And I know Los Animas was out of a, out of both restrooms a couple of years ago for 10 months. And they certainly did not get anything like this replaced. So I would just like to see everything more expediently done, so, and hopefully the, this new restroom will be up and running by March, well, by March or April, by the springtime, but it's not even ordered yet, so...
Because they can't order till we approve.
Right.
So there's a motion on the floor. Is, is there a motion?
Our motion?
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Armandares to approve.
And I'll second it.
And seconded by Councilmember Marks. Okay, and this is a digital vote tie, yes?
Yes, Madam Mayor, just give me one second.
Mm-hmm.
And the motion was made by Councilmember Armandares?
Yes, and seconded by Councilmember Marks.
Thank you. I'm going to open the phone now.
Okay, and that is unanimous minus the one absent. Okay, great, 8.2. Award a contract to CalWest Lighting and Signal Maintenance for the fiscal year 23 San Ysidro Lighting Picnic Area Improvements Project, number 23 PW281, and approve a project expenditure of $178,200.
Thank you, uh, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Carl Biarkey, interim Public Works Director. Oops. Little background on this, uh, the city has received grant funds from the state of California. This is the Prop 68 Grant Program, and we're putting that money towards two projects. The first one was the Gilroy Spart, Gilroy Sports Park Playground Surface Repair. That was just completed this year. And the other one is the San Ysidro, uh, Park Lighting Improvements, which is the topic of tonight's, uh, item. The bidding process, we used that, we used our informal bidding process, as called out for in our, um, purchasing policy. Three contractors were invited to bid and we received no bids. And when we received no bids, then what we do is we can seek out a contractor to help us get this built. We reached out to our, uh, streetlight maintenance contractor, asked them for a bid. They gave us one, and it was, uh, less, it was $162,000 and below the engineer's estimate. Scope of the project is, uh, we're essentially replacing some old light fixtures with LED lights, and this improves, this is better light quality, it's, it's a safety factor, um, and reduces our long-term maintenance and energy costs. So we're replacing, uh, 16 streetlights. Those are the ones from the, the pole, those, these are sort of near the perimeter, and I have a, a diagram of the park I can show you. But 16 streetlights and then on our, we have some Cobra light fixtures out there. Cobras are the ones that extend out on two sides, and we're replacing those with LED. And we have to have this done by June 30th of next year, uh, to be in compliance with the grant program. Uh, this is San Ysidro Park. The, uh, north is off to the left, the east is to the, up to the top, and if you can make out the red dots on the, on the top of this particular diagram, those are the Cobra light heads that will be replaced with LED. And then down along the western side and the southern side, which would be the bottom and the, and the right, those are the streetlights that we're going to replace with LED. And then we're replacing the whole pole as well as the light fixture. So, a little bit about the budget, the proposed contract is for $162,000. We're asking for a 10% contingency for total authorization of $178,200. State of California Department of Parks and Recreation Office of Grants and Local Services will reimburse the city $133,384. And we will match that, we have a match requirement of $44,816, and that's recommended to be funded by the General Fund utilizing fiscal year '24 budgetary savings from the citywide park re-roofing rehabilitation capital project that we just talked about. So the recommendation is to award a contract to CalWest Lighting and Signal Maintenance, Inc., for the fiscal year '23 San Ysidro Lighting and Picnic Area Improvements Project, and approve a project expenditure of $178,200. And that concludes that report.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any, um, members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
No speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Carl, you said match. We're not matching, you mean we supplement. The, the grant is $133,000 and we're kicking in the other 44.
That's correct.
That's what you mean?
That's correct, yes.
Yeah, not, not matching. Okay. Any questions from council?
Move for approval?
Oh, I have a question first.
Okay, Councilmember Armandares?
Thank you. Carl, you mentioned that three contractors were invited to bid. Um, how were those contractors chosen and why do you think nobody bid on it?
They, they are chosen from, um, when we do informal bids, we can reach out to contractors that we know do this kind of work. This is a specialty kind of work, so it wasn't real easy to find, uh, contractors to bid on this. And it's not clear why they, why they didn't, why we don't get bids. It just wasn't, maybe the project wasn't large enough for them, it, it wasn't clear to us, so we, fortunately, we were able to find someone who we feel very comfortable with, um, for this.
And to steal, uh, Councilmember Tovar's, Lightning, is it a local contractor?
CalWest is a local contractor, yes.
Okay, thank you.
It's one.
Okay. If there are no other questions, looking for a second to Councilmember Tovar?
A second.
Okay. So, motion made by Councilmember Tovar and seconded by Councilmember Armandares to award the contract to CalWest Lighting. And that's a digital vote? All right, and that is unanimous again with one absent. Okay, 8.3. Award of a contract to Ruggieri Jensen Azar and Associates for the preparation of design documents for the Gilroy ICE Center Street Improvements and Traffic Signal Project, Approve a contract expenditure of $316,000 and authorize the city administrator to execute the final agreement. Carl Biarkey will give this report as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, Carl Biarkey, interim Public Works Director. This is a consulting services contract that we're recommending. Uh, the street improvements and traffic signal out near the outdoor sports center are included in the adopted fiscal year '24 capital improvement program. It's as a companion project to the Gilroy ICE Center. Uh, the improvements have been considered and reviewed in the, uh, environmental review for the outdoor sports center, and we, in 2019, we did a supplemental EIR to accommodate the new ICE Center, and it, it did discuss these, um, street and signal improvements there. And our goal is to improve, uh, vehicle, bicycle, and pedestrian access to the outdoor sports park. And we're scheduling this for, so that the improvements are ready when the ICE Center opens, Gilroy ICE Center opens. This is an aerial view of the project. Um, this, the signal is identified at the top there, that's the Monterey Road and the Monterey-Frontage Road intersection, we'll put a new traffic signal there. And we're going to rebuild the entrance into our sports park, the Frontage Road there. And you can see the ICE, uh, the Gilroy ICE Center is located down to the left, the site of the new ICE Center. So the goals of the project, we want to improve Monterey-Frontage Road, it's currently in disrepair, we're going to rebuild it, um, new sidewalks, new streetlights, drainage improvements, striping and bike lanes. And for this, and then we also want to install a new traffic signal at Monterey Road, Monterey-Frontage Road intersection. We'll do this by first evaluating the traffic patterns and design, designing the signal accordingly, and we're going to accommodate pedestrians and bicycles as well as vehicles in with that design. Uh, so the consultant's scope, uh, is to, uh, prepare bid-ready documents, and that means construction plans, specifications, and cost estimates. And the elements of their proposal, uh, include topographic survey, property line boundaries, geotechnical investigation, traffic signal study, drainage analysis, and then roadway design and traffic signal design. The process for this consultant, we have a list of, um, we have a list of consultants for different categories that we can draw from in engineering. In this case, this was a pretty broad category for, uh, just civil design. And, uh, we sought proposals from, uh, four, four or five of the, of established firms on that list. We received two, and those were evaluated by staff, and when we evaluated those, we determined that Ruggieri Jensen Azar to be the most qualified. And the schedule and fee, uh, we, if this is approved, we'll begin the design immediately, uh, hope to hit 65% design in May and have bid-ready package in July of next year. And then soon after, we can, uh, work on putting the bid out and getting a construction contractor on board. RJAs fee proposal is $301,000. We're requesting a contingency of $15,000 for a total authorization of $316,000. So we're, uh, uh, recommending award of contract to Ruggieri Jensen Azar for the preparation of design documents for the Gilroy ICE Center Street Improvements and Traffic Signal Project, and approving a contract expenditure of $316,000 and authorizing the city administrator to execute the final agreement. And I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Carl. Yeah, this is not just the street that needs improvement there. This is, right now, you don't even know that the sports park is back there when you drive down Monterey, so this is going to not only improve that Frontage Road, but there'll be a stoplight there, and then of course, we could do signage when the ICE Center's there, but...
And we, we may introduce a, a, does a entry element of some kind, saying that the sports park is here, so...
Yeah. No, that's great. And Ruggieri Jensen is a company I know that we've used since back when I was on the Planning Commission in the 90s, so they've been around. Okay, Councilmember Tovar, you have a question?
They're from Gilroy.
They're from Gilroy, yes, they're a local firm.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
About time. Good.
Okay, um... Go to public comment when you, uh, are able to get back. Any other councilmembers wanting to speak besides, uh, the one who's, okay? Okay, do we have anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item?
No speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
All right, then this is coming back to council if no one else?
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Councilmember Bracco and seconded by Councilmember Tovar to award this contract to Ruggieri Jensen Azar.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carl.
Thank you, yes. And that's also unanimous minus, uh, with one absent. All right, 8.4. Award a contract to Youth Alliance for the South County Restorative Justice Youth Version Program Coordinator Position and approve a contract expenditure of $30744. Oh, it's not Luke, it's Sandra. Sandra, you're giving this report?
Yes.
Okay, Sandra's giving this report, and hopefully she'll start off by telling us the money is not coming from us. Yeah, okay. Go ahead.
Did you say that? I did, I did say the little dragon. Was it in the council presentation? It's not in the opposed. Okay, I also have to let them try to get that.
Do you want to say anything about this?
Yes.
And please?
I can just leave it there. Do you know what you're saying? So, I want to learn. The cheap thing. There it is. Thank you. I'm going to figure that out, thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Okay, good evening, Mayor Blankley and members of the Gilroy City Council. My name is Sandra Cruz, and I currently serve as the South County task force coordinator with the City of Gilroy. And I'm here tonight to present on agenda item number 8.4 as it relates to the South County Restorative Justice Youth Diversion Program. Before I dive into the presentation, I would likely, I would like to briefly share an overview of the South County task force. The South County task force is a regional collaboration with the wide spectrum of partners to include various community-based agencies, governmental agencies, and also law enforcement agencies. And our work serves the communities of Morgan Hill, Gilroy, and Sarmartine, is funded through local, county, and state partners, is organized into three different groups, the policy, the technical team, and also working committees. Since 2013, we've been able to serve an induplicated number of 13, 15,000 youth and family, families in South County. And our work is guided through our strategic plans that has outlined goals and objectives for our work. Our current strategic plan is titled Project to Thrive, which built on our previous 2017-2021 strategic plan, which was titled Project Thrive. This was developed from 2021 to 2022 through our strategic plan committee, which is composed of over 13 community-based agencies, government partners, and other partners. This strategic plan engaged the community and stakeholders in over 30 sessions. We were able to connect with 367 community members and stakeholders in this process. We use restorative listening circles to uplift the community members and the stakeholders' needs, their concerns, hopes, and also the goals that they had. We, these topics, these five topics that you see listed here are consistent with the emerging listening circles from the South County. And the youth diversion program that I'm going to be talking about tonight is, is a direct result of the strategic plan that we currently have. About a year ago, the council accepted the grant funds from BSCC, the Board of State and Community Corrections, for $1 million for three calendar years, 2023 to 2025. And these funds directly fund the South County Restorative Justice Youth Diversion Program. The state funds directly expand this diversion program. It serves more youth, and it allows us to also contract a full-time coordinator for these services. These are a list of the current diversion partners. We have both school districts. We have both local law enforcement agencies. We have local community-based agencies. We have the district attorney's office, the sheriff's department, and the State of California as a partner in this diversion work. The diversion goals are, the first one, to provide youth and their families with the support and services that they need in order to succeed in South County. This program also helps youth to be accountable for the actions in a restorative manner. It uses language that youth and families understand. It brings in and uplifts the voice of the victims and the community. It holds the family structure and also the community accountable for our support in the youth. And importantly, it promotes public safety. This program uses prevention and intervention models. It allows youth to engage in this harmful conduct, to come together with those that have been impacted by that harm, to address the harm that occurred in the community, is an alternative to the traditional path that youth usually have to go through after they receive a citation. And the successful completion of this program allows youth's case to be sealed under welfare and institution code 827.95. And this program is grounded in restorative justice and trauma-informed principles. Very high overview of the process, of the framework of this program from start to end. First, there is a 911 call made, and there's police contact. The second step is to check the youth's eligibility. And if the youth qualifies for this program, they're referred to, to the program. Step three is an engagement call and a intake interview by our community-based agency partners through the youth support specialist. And step four is the restorative justice circle where youth and those impacted by the harm are able to sit down together and really address what occurred. And then there's a community building phase from three to six months. It's really based on the case and what the youth might need. There might be restitution involved. There might be different services that the youth may need to complete, all based from the restorative justice circle. And then there is a program completion if the youth is able to successfully complete the program. In order for this work to be expanded through this grant, the city is required to contract with the local nonprofit to fulfill the full-time coordinator role and responsibilities of the coordinator. So on September 11, the city published the 24-RFP-PD-490 on the city's website. It was also published on the local newspaper. It was sent through email for, with local community-based agencies and county partners. And it was also advertised, advertised on our social media. On October 6, this RFP received a total of four proposals. And there was an evaluation phase of the proposals from October 9 through, through the 26th. This evaluation panel consisted of a diverse group of in-house and outside key partner agencies that graded the proposals and also hosted interviews. On November 6, the notice of, of award was published, selecting Youth Alliance as the consultant to fulfill this role. November's 4, protests were received, allowing the city to be able to move on to the next step. And tonight, I am here to recommend that the council takes the next step in order to continue this work. So what would Youth Alliance be doing? Youth Alliance would be fulfilling this full-time coordinator responsibility from December 1, 2023 to December 31, 2025 for $300,744. And this agency would oversee, coordinate, and support the referrals and the process of this diversion program, would facilitate the monthly meetings, the collaborative meetings, the meetings with the families, would oversee an approximately 50-plus youth. New referrals, along with maintaining and closing out the current youth on the diversion program, would conduct youth referral entrance and exit surveys, will coordinate the restorative justice circles that occur, would coordinate the trainings, would work with our program evaluators, and other, fulfill other programmatic and logistical responsibilities for this work. The recommendation is to award the contract to this community-based agency, Youth Alliance, for the amount of $300,744 for the South County Restorative Justice Youth Diversion Program Coordinator role, and authorize the city administrator to execute the contract and all associated documents for this work.
Thank you, Sandra. Excellent report. Those who, I think, know, I said on that, Councilmember Tovar is also someone who sits on this, on this entity. Can I just ask, who would be the oversight to the Youth Alliance? Is that something that, is that oversought by South County task force?
It is, yes. It's overseen by myself and then my supervisor.
Okay. And the whole, the $300,000 is part of the grant money? This is the grant money that's not?
Yes, it's all grant funds.
Right. Okay, I have Councilmember Marks on the board, and then I'll go to you, Councilmember Tovar, because I see you waving your hands. Okay, Councilmember Marks?
Okay, thank you, Sandra. Thank you, Sandra. That was very informative. I have a question, and I was wondering this when I read the staff report. The $300,000, is that for the program coordinator, one person?
That is to fund the coordinator, all the aspects of the program. It's for two years, and it is a fully burdened cost of the agency to, to, for the coordinator role. And then it also has funding for supplies and expenses that are associated with the work.
So then how much is the actual coordinator getting? What, what does that person's salary?
Well, the money is going to the Youth Alliance, not to a person.
Okay, well then, then how am I reading this incorrectly then? It says this South County Restorative Justice Youth Diversion Program Coordinator position is funded. And the way it's written, it sounds like they're getting paid $300,000 a year.
No, through December of 2025.
For two years, $300,000.
For two years? $150,000. Okay, you read it like that too? Okay. So that money then is over a two-year period for this person? Okay, so that was in there?
Yes, and it goes to Youth Alliance for them to pay for the coordinator, for a full-time coordinator and everything associated with that coordinator. And then there's also budget for supplies and expenses for being able to, you know, coordinate all the effort.
That makes more sense. That wasn't in the, the report. Now, will council ever hear back on the success of this program and get statistics on, through families?
Through those of us who are the reps.
Oh, all right. You'll do that. Okay, great. Okay, thank you.
And in addition, part of this, this state grant is for the city, for the South County task force to report back to the state. So we do have a third-party evaluator evaluating all the work. And at the end of the grant, the city has to submit a report to the states. That is going to be very detailed. How many youth did we serve? Did we meet our goals? And that will be made public.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Tovar, did you have?
Yeah, thank you. Carol asked one of the questions I have, but Sandra, if you can share with the public, in one of your slides, you talked about there was four proposals. Can you talk about the, the differences in those proposals? And also, you'd mentioned the stakeholders that were involved in making this, this decision. Who exactly were those individuals?
Yes, so the city received a total of four proposals, and they were all scored based on six key criteria. The first one was statement of qualifications. Out of 100 points, 20 of those points were for the statement of qualifications. The second criteria was a project understanding, also for 20 points. Criteria three was for the project schedule, for 10 points. Four was project budget. Five was key staff. And then there was a section for references. So Youth Alliance scored 80.50 out of their average score. The second agency scored 54.17. The third one scored 39.33, and the last one scored 16 points on an average score of 100 from, from the panel.
Second part of my question?
The folks that were on this panel were from key stakeholders and partners. They included members from the Gilroy Unified School District, one member, one member from the Morgan Hill Unified School District, a member from the Gilroy PD, and that was our internal rep, a member from the Morgan Hill Police Department, a member from the county DFCS, and also a member from the district attorney's office.
Thank you, thank you for that. Mayor, if there's no other questions, then I'll move for approval.
Okay. Did I ask for a public comment?
Sorry, no.
Okay, public comment?
One speaker card, Madam Mayor, it's Ron Kirkish.
Okay. Is that, I don't know if that mic's on. Okay, now it is.
Okay, thank you. That's a nice chunk of money, but it's not enough. We need more. We have problems in our youth, and I'd like to see that bucket get filled a lot more. We need well over $1 million to help our kids. The reason I'm concerned, when I came up here, was I didn't know too much about this issue. I was concerned that, and I, and I saw your slide with the number of groups, community groups that I believe you will be dispersing funds to for this program. And I didn't see anybody up there that I was against. They all look like very fine community groups. But I, the reason I'm speaking is because I want to ensure that we use this money to help our kids. But I'm very concerned that this money not be used to give to groups that disrespect, teach the kids to disrespect, disrespect our police officers. So that's why I'm here. I don't think that's the case, but I just wanted to make that statement. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, seeing no other speakers, then we have a motion by Councilmember Tovar, seconded by Councilmember Klein, digital vote. And this is motion to approve the contract.
There are actually two separate items, and I think you can do them both at the same time.
Okay, to award the contract and authorize the city administrator to execute the contract. Yep. Okay. And that also passes unanimously with one absent. Okay, that brings us to item nine, public hearings. We have none. 10 is unfinished business. We have none. 11, 11.1 is the introduction to the draft downtown parking management plan that our interim Public Works Director, Carl Biarkey, is going to give us. Quite thorough document in our packets.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, members of the council, Carl Biarkey, interim Public Works Director. I'm going to read you an introduction. In September of 2022, the city hired the firm W Trans to prepare the downtown parking management plan, a comprehensive study for the city's downtown parking inventory and use. The goal of the plan is to quantify the existing parking conditions, evaluate demand versus supply now and into the future, and provide strategies the city might employ to improve parking availability. So the, the plan is essentially done, so it's, we feel it's time now to share it with the city council. We're going to walk you through the plan as succinctly as possible. And what we're asking for tonight is just feedback from the council. We'll, we can incorporate that into the final version and bring this back later for a final adoption. Tonight, I have Brian Canepa. He's the principal and owner and of W Trans and the author of this study, so he's going to walk us through that. So without any further ado, I'll introduce Brian.
Excellent. Thank you, Carl. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for seeing me this evening. Brian Canepa from W Trans. And as you mentioned earlier, Mayor, yes, it is a robust report, so if you didn't read it all, I would completely understand. But what I'm going to try to do tonight is just walk through relatively briefly the process that we went through, the analysis findings, and the recommendations of the report. So just very briefly, in terms of how this project progressed, we did kick this off over a year ago, last fall. We conducted parking data collection, which I'll discuss soon, just over a year ago. We had a really robust community engagement process in late winter that involved three workshops, two focus groups, an online survey, website, as well as a hotline and other pieces to get the public involved. And we developed the parking management plan in the summer, and we're here to present it to you for your feedback. So the parking analysis, so when, as I mentioned earlier, we went, we kicked off this process a year ago, just over a year ago, as you can see from the dates here, and did a full parking inventory and occupancy survey to downtown from First Street to 10th Street, from Railroad to Eagleberry, including the Civic Center. And we surveyed all of the publicly accessible public and private spaces, both on-street and off-street, to get a really comprehensive look at parking demand. We did it from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, by hour each day. We also surveyed duration, how long vehicles were parked there on-street, to try to determine, for example, if it was relatively high turnover patrons versus longer-staying employees. I should also note too, based, based on the dates of this, this was prior to the parking lot at 7th and Eagleberry opening. So just keep that in mind. We did break the area, because it's such a large area, into kind of these four zones for analysis, the upper downtown, core downtown... We did it from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, by hour each day. We also surveyed duration, how long vehicles were parked there on-street to try to determine, for example, if it was relatively high turnover patrons versus longer staying employees. I should also note too, based on the dates of this, this was prior to the parking lot at Seventh and Eagleberry opening. So just keep that in mind. We did break the area, because it's such a large area, into kind of these four zones for analysis, the upper downtown, core downtown, and lower downtown and Civic Center. This is essentially what it looks like at peak hour on the weekday. So peak demand, looking at by hour for all three days, occurred between 10:00 to 11:00 AM on the weekday. The colors on this graph, this is just for, only for on-street parking, red indicating very full, green indicating very empty. But as you can see, of the roughly 3,200 spaces that were surveyed, the peak demand was about 1,400 spaces, or almost 44% of the supply overall for the entire study area. We found that there was, you know, generally higher demand on-street and then public off-street parking than private off-street parking, which is frankly very typical of most downtowns. The other days that we surveyed did have relatively similar patterns, slightly lower demand. I will note that the holiday parade, when we counted last year, if you all remember, it was a lot of rain. So, but we still have strategies in here to, to work with special event demand. In terms of where the demand is the highest, perhaps not surprisingly, is what we call the core downtown, which is essentially Monterey from Fourth to Seventh. At that point, you can kind of see from the off-street lots here on the map that the public off-street lots in particular are very well-used. And with a peak demand of about 55% overall. The, the other lots on this map, for example, are primarily private off-street that are green. We did also really want to dig in and survey the Transit Center that serves both the VTA and Caltrain, almost 470 parking spaces in those lots. So it makes up a substantial part of the total overall supply, with the peak demand only reaching 28%. Now, this is in large part due to declines in transit ridership from the pandemic. We did interview and meet with the VTA to discuss the historic data they had, which they were able to provide to us. So we were able to find that pre-pandemic, when transit ridership was at a normal level, they did have almost two-thirds of the lot empty. That still means that even at the peak time, there was about 170 empty spaces in that lot. So considerable vacancy. And also they determined that quite a few parkers who were there were actually not transit riders. Now granted, we, I'm well aware that the Caltrain has added a new train recently to service Gilroy, but transit ridership levels are still, I think, kind of struggling to get back to what they were. On-street parking duration, so as I mentioned, we did collect the time, the amount of time that vehicles were parked on-street throughout the downtown. Most of the downtown is unregulated parking, so there's no time limits or anything of that sort. However, in the core downtown, there are many two-hour time limits. And what we found was that most people tended to obey the speed limits, or speed limits, time limits, apologies. So about 80% stayed two hours or less. You have about 10%, maybe minor infraction, two to three hours. And then there was about 10% of the vehicles that were staying anywhere from three hours to as high as 12 hours. So this, what this indicates to us is that generally there's pretty good compliance with time limits. However, there are clearly some long-term parkers who are staying in, in prime on-street parking spaces, and they very well could be employees. So the key findings from the analysis, just really quickly, looking at as a whole, the downtown has a lot of empty parking at peak hour. Again, that's looking at the entirety altogether. It's almost 1,800 vacant parking spaces at peak hour. That said, there are what we call hotspots, particularly around the core of the downtown. If you're trying to find a parking space on Monterey, between Fifth and Sixth, you're trying to park in the public off-street lots right off there, it would be hard, maybe harder to find a spot. It might give the perception, and we heard this from some folks, that it's hard to find parking. So there is this kind of dichotomy going on. In trying to identify the causes of this, we found that, I mean, this is a lot of the feedback we received during the community input, was there was a lot of feedback on insufficient information away finding to different facilities about how to get to different parking lots. The fact that there is a lot of parking in the downtowns of parking supply, but a lot of it frankly is reserved private parking. So even if people want to park there currently, they're not necessarily allowed to. And lastly, safety. Safety was a concern that we heard come up repeatedly. And that people felt that even if there were spaces, for example, you know, three or four blocks away, they didn't feel safe necessarily parking there and walking to their destination. As Carl mentioned too, we also examined future build-out conditions. And for that, we looked at the city's general plan build-out, which is pretty large. So by 24, I mean, so we projected essentially 1,200 new residential units, about 850,000 square feet of commercial. So it's a pretty sizable amount to add to the downtown. If the city were to add this much development to downtown, you know, we calculated it out about a 285 space deficit. So this is basically a way to say, yes, there is a lot of parking availability currently. As you build out over time, that, that surplus will shrink. And if you did ever get to this full general plan build-out, you'd probably require more robust management measures in the interim. I will note too, that as part of our study, we had an economics consultant from strategic economics on this, because we really understood and valued the input of the businesses and understanding how the economy, how and if parking affected the downtown economy. And so our consultant went and broke down a lot of what we call CoStar data on retail sales in the core downtown by block, preserving the anonymity of different businesses. And what we found was essentially over time that, from 2016 to today, that the downtown in itself, and again, this might not be a surprise, but retail sales have been declining well before the pandemic, from 2016 going into the pandemic. But talking with the consultant, we found that this is not atypical. Many different small Californian communities are having the same issues, essentially, and it stems back from the 2008 recession. And in this case, looking back at the data and this parking supply that we have, we could determine that it's very likely this decline has nothing to do with parking. It's really driven by other factors. And what the determination made was that a lot of businesses that had gone out of business from 2016 to today were smaller specialty retail. And, which is again, very common, right? If you think of like a hardware store, a lot of people are not going downtown to the local hardware store anymore. They might go to Lowe's, or they might buy it online. But there has been a conversion to more what we call experiential retail or, or destination retail, where it's a, it's a brewery, it's a coffee shop. It's something where you're not necessarily buying a, a, a good, like a hammer, but you're having an experience with friends. And so that's, they're actually, there was very encouraging data to show that the downtown economy is rebounding from that. So what do we do about this? So we developed a, a whole host of parking strategies. And the way we approached the strategies was in a few different ways. One is, we really wanted to make sure that strategies were addressing multiple users' concerns, from patrons to employees and residents, to the businesses themselves, making sure that whatever we were recommending did not have an adverse effect on the downtown merchants. And as such, also not putting forward something that's not cost-effective at the end of the day, right? We're well aware that some of these strategies might be very effective in managing demand, but they could be extremely costly. We also, as you'll see in a second, intentionally phased strategies based on the need, the current and future need. Right now, there's a lot of available parking. And so we don't, we didn't want to put forward strategies now that were essentially throwing the kitchen sink at something and over-regulating currently. So with that, we did develop some immediate action strategies as part of this. I believe there's seven of them. And again, most of these immediate action strategies were specifically chosen because they are easier to implement and cheaper. Doesn't mean that they don't work well, some of them do work very well, but they're definitely easier to put forward. Starting out with wayfinding, you know, again, we heard from different folks that oftentimes the, the, the challenge is just being able to simply find a parking spot. They don't even know that some of these lots are available. So as an example, maybe creating better wayfinding signage to the lot at Seventh and Eagleberry. People coming in from out of town, particularly visitors, might not be aware of this. Static signage is relatively cheap. You can better distribute parking demand by doing this. And you know, as this picture shows too, there is even, you know, pedestrian signage that can be used, that, that to show people how far it is to walk to different locations. As I mentioned, the VTA Caltrain parking lot has considerable vacancy right now, even at peak hour. In talking with the VTA, they do have long-term development plans that are a little uncertain right now, but it sounds like at some point in the future, those lots will be developed. But there is opportunity in the short term to be able to have a discussion with VTA to better utilize those spaces for the public. I would also note that even in the future, once development does occur there, because that station, because the development is within a half-mile of the station, according to AB 2097, which took effect January 1st, the city can require any parking built on that site to be publicly accessible. So just keep that in your cap for the future. Shared parking agreements, this is something that's becoming much more actively used in different communities around California, and essentially creates partnerships between the public and private entities. As I mentioned earlier, there is a large amount of private parking that's, that's empty. And you know, you can, I'm sure everyone has had experiences with this, where you go to park there and you can't, because obviously it's reserved to particular users. A shared parking agreement is one in which the public sector says, you know, we will, we want you to open up your lot to users, maybe just during certain hours when you're not in operation, and we will work with you to compensate you in some way. So it could be through cleaning, it could be through lighting, it could be liability, it could be financial compensation. I actually have some good shared parking legal templates to share with the city if they're, if it's interested. But by doing so, you actually open up and create more parking without actually having to construct new parking, which can be extraordinarily expensive. Simply mobility information, getting the resources out there. Right now, for example, the city's website is, is relatively limited in what it offers. There are other jurisdictions that serve as good examples. And really advertising what frankly are free resources. The VTA 511.org offer things like free guaranteed ride home to employees, free ride matching, free van pooling subsidies. And these are things that oftentimes people are not aware of. And so being able to get that information set up through the city and working with the Chamber and Visit Gilroy to make sure that employees in particular are aware of these resources is great. Again, free, so let's, let's take advantage of free. Parking regulations, so as I mentioned earlier, most of the downtown, if you look at it as a whole, is unregulated. There are no time limits. Really, the, the two-hour time limits that are in effect are from 9:00 to 6:00, and primarily the core of the downtown, from Fourth to Seventh. Public feedback was a little varied on this subject. Some people said they were happy with the two-hour time limit, some people said they wanted three hours. You know, you have an economy that's shifting more to an early evening economy with the bars and restaurants that are coming downtown. In the future, you may want to explore shifting the times in which parking is enforced, maybe instead of 9:00 to 6:00, going to 10:00 to 7:00. But right now, there's really, there's pretty good compliance in the spaces that are there. But the one thing that we did hear from a couple businesses is a request to expand the time limits on other parts of Monterey, that maybe employees or other long-term parkers, I think the one I'm thinking of in particular, I think was up near somewhere in the first to fourth street area, and requested put time limits in there. And so the thinking here is to say, hey, maybe explore putting in four-hour time limits in those areas. They're a little bit less restricted than two hours, so as a patron, you could stay there longer, but it's still an incentive to get employees who may be parking there eight hours off the street. You know, we are aware that there are a couple parklets downtown currently that have been unchanged for quite a while. You know, some cities have adopted parklet design standards, just something that to keep in mind in terms of if, if you are going to pursue that at some point, to keep in mind things like aesthetic and safety standards, proper location, and so forth. And lastly, I didn't know this, you actually have this on the agenda later on tonight, but now I do. It's, it's essentially leasing parking spaces. Some of the feedback that we heard from some folks in the downtown is there was some concern over food trucks downtown and how to, how to, how to deal with that. And we said, gosh, you know, there is different ways to be able to manage that if you're parking either in time-limited spaces or unregulated spaces, but you can establish rules around that. You can charge for those spaces if you want, if the, if, if the city deems that it's an unfair competition with current businesses. Every city's a little different, I'll leave that to you. But you know, in terms, by adopting these standards, just to keep in mind that you oftentimes want to locate these sorts of things in visible areas that are good for the food trucks, but maybe ones that don't cause congestion or pedestrian queuing or safety issues like that. So that is all the list of the immediate strategies. As I mentioned, there is what I call a Phase Two strategies. These, again, these set of strategies are very effective at managing parking demand, but they take a lot more effort to implement and higher cost. And in our assessment, you don't really need these at this point. Now again, the city always can pursue whatever you wish, but again, we're not recommending this for implementation. This is something in the future as the city, as the, as the downtown builds out. And they vary considerably here. I basically loaded them all into one slide here. From increased parking enforcement and ambassadors, to really welcome people and enforce rules downtown, to having transportation man, management and bike parking regulations, to get people into not driving as much, potentially forming a transportation management association. The one that always, you know, causes quite a, quite a stir is parking pricing. Again, we're not recommending this at this point. And we did survey people to get their opinions on that, and there was decidedly a majority of people who were not interested. To things like residential and employee permits. So there are ways to better manage parking, but frankly, the, the, the demand right now is not high enough to really warrant this level of what I'd consider, you know, active management and regulation. But again, that's, that's at your discretion. So try to keep that concise. I know it was a very hefty report, but we'd love to hear feedback from you. And again, well, our next steps would be then to tailor the report and come back to you.
All right, thank you. Ty, when you can, my screen isn't where it should be, so I can't see if there are council members raising their hands to talk. Oh, you can't either? Yeah, it says waiting for, as if we already made a motion. Okay, so he'll work on that. I, I have some questions, maybe I'll just start while, while he's working on that, then I can see. How many, did you, what is the inventory of spaces that are public?
So the public, here, I'll scroll back here.
Yes, I, I can't get to the report to remind myself what that was.
Yeah, it's just so, for, for everyone's viewing pleasure here. So about 3,200 spaces here, the on-street and the public off-street are the, what we call public spaces.
Okay, so of the third, well, it says 3,230 in the page that I.
Yeah, I apologize, we updated a number in the interim.
Oh, okay. But of that, so 1,0244 are private.
Yes.
So if you removed, I mean, I understand this is how you did your report, but if you, I, I just assumed this would be a parking management of public parking, not of private parking. So if you removed private, are, do we have, I mean, what does that do to the number of spaces? Did you look at it that way, or no?
Yes, we did. So I just advanced the slide here so you can see. So even if you take out the private off-street parking, yes, on-street and public off-street is more utilized, but it's still 53% and 47%.
Okay, so it's still sufficient, so, right?
It is.
It's still sufficient, it's about how we manage it to, yeah.
But I would encourage you though, in order to really achieve good parking management, it's good to be able to address both the private side and the public side. The shared parking agreements, for example, that's, that's completely optional, there's no requirement to do that. But oftentimes, private lot owners will be interested in doing it and actually open up more of your public supply.
I'm not so sure, but okay. I mean, I know a few and they're not, so, but okay.
That's okay, it depends, it depends, yeah.
Okay. And then with respect, when you look at the VTA lot, I mean, that's one that I, for one, have been working very hard to make, to give people a reason to be parking there to use transit. So I, you know, would hesitate to consider that parking in, I'm just speaking to the, to the council here, really, that we would not want to depend on the VTA parking lot when we're trying to get transit users to use that parking lot, is what I would say. And then when you say peak hour, it's 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM, right?
Yes, for the counts.
Yeah, for the counts. So which is strange to me, because I would have thought more like in the evening time, but no?
No, not overall. Again, the, the pattern of demand will shift over the course of the day. So I'm, I'm showing you in this slide, for example, a snapshot. I mean, we could have come up with, got 24 snapshots of every single hour, 25 or anyways. But you know, in the evening, for example, yeah, you do have certain blocks that will get a little busier, particularly in front of like a restaurant or a bar or things like that. But while those are actually busier, some of the other blocks and streets or off-street lots have lost cars. So the overall occupancy is actually lower.
So do, do you know what the peak hour is for Monterey Street, between Fourth and Sixth, or that's not how you looked at this?
We didn't look at it specifically in terms of a single street, but it's easy enough to do, all the data's there.
Okay.
I mean, even looking at, for example, this, this view right here, and again, this is why we've also broken into zones, because someone parking on. is why we've also broken into zones, because someone parking on Second Street is probably not going to walk to Ninth Street. And so we wanted to be cognizant of the fact that people will not walk that far. So if you look at the map here in front of you, in the core downtown, you'll see actually most of those blocks in there are either orange, yellow, red, which means they're pretty well occupied during the middle of the day there. And again, parking patterns will shift somewhat, that, that is bound to happen, of course.
Right. I just think, at least my experience is lately anyway, going to our down, the core of the downtown, it is pretty much impossible to park on Monterey Street in the core in the evening. But that's not, that was not your experience?
No, that's not what the counts showed. No, again, is it on one or one block or maybe two blocks? Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, between Fourth and, yeah, in the core and, and, and on Fifth Street between Eagleberry and, and Monterey.
What we found from the survey, because we actually did ask people in the survey, how far do you walk typically from your parking space? And 90% of people said they park, they're able to park either two blocks or less from their destination.
Oh, definitely.
So it's not-
No, two blocks, yes.
Yeah, so again, it's not a, a long distance, so that's why I say it's, and I think that's also contributing to the fact that you could end up having one block face, the one that you want to park on be full.
Yeah.
But maybe around the corner, it could be mostly empty.
Okay. Councilmember Tovar, I see you.
Thank you, yeah. And thank you for the report. I actually did read just about all of this.
Oh, okay.
I do have some questions, but then later on after, I, I have a recommendation, hopefully that we can add to the Phase One. But looking at your report real quick, the study was done before the Eagleberry and Seventh Street parking lot went up, right?
Correct.
So, yeah, so there's actually more parking, because that's not incorporating this-
There are 145 more spaces, I believe.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we knew that. Okay, and then you talked about the two hour and four hour restrictions. How has that worked with other cities?
Well, it's dependent upon your enforcement, right? If you, once you put in time limits, there will be some people who will comply and some people who will not. So will it be better than currently? Yes, because some people will choose to comply and they will not park there anymore. Will some people choose not to comply? Yes, because I think there's, uh, there's not a high degree of enforcement. So that's why we say it's a, you know, we're trying to choose measures here that are very, relatively low cost, that we're trying to provide a little bit of turnover.
So it comes down to enforcement, basically?
It does come down to enforcement. And one thing actually, I apologize, but I failed to mention here is, and you read the report, but we were tasked with and we provided a whole host of financing options as part of the report, but we didn't really receive any feedback from staff or others about which were, which were preferable. So that's why we've left it kind of open-ended in the report currently. But understanding that something like enforcement is not free, and if you do choose to employ that as an option, it can be effective, but you really want to make sure that it's constructive and not punitive. I was gonna say that.
Okay. I have one more question.
Okay.
And again, I, you know, we're gonna have this discussion later regarding the food trucks, which I'm in support of, but thinking about that, and I'm gonna read, read to what I typed up real quick. So how have other cities added parklet design and incorporated leases, lease space for food trucks?
Okay, so that's, so you're, you're addressing that with two of the recommendations, the parklet design and the food trucks.
Right, and, well, yeah, what I'm, where I'm going with that is while preserving parking. Okay, so when you look at those two, how, you know, when you see other cities, how have they preserved the parking when it comes to those two?
Well, it's really, I mean, it's a value and a judgment call based on the jurisdiction. So there are more cities now that, for, for parklets, for example, that are actually charging money for, and they, they pass it via ordinance, and I can, you know, I was talking to one of your other staff members earlier, I'm gonna give, give some feedback on that too. But, you know, it chart, and it varies in terms of how much they're charging. I'm starting a study just right now in Los Altos, and they charge a fee for their on-street, for their parklets, but it's very, very low fee because they're trying to encourage the use of parklets. And again, you know, you can, there's gonna be, about to be disagreement about what the right fee is. And then you also have to make a quantitative and frankly qualitative judgment about what the right number of, of parklets are for a given town. Here, you know, you do have, I would say quite a bit of opportunity to put more parklets in if they wanted to, although at my understanding, having talked with downtown businesses, that there's not a high demand for them right now, but that's just what we heard. Typically, these parklets also really better serve restaurants, coffee shops, bars, things that, like of that sort, rather than someone who is like a service, like a retailer, like a hair salon, or something like that. And so you just want to keep that in mind because some businesses will be definitely more pro, I've found, parklets, and others a little bit less so, because they more value the parking.
Right, well, yeah, and I want to be careful when you say that there isn't a high demand. I think from my conversations with businesses, if the process was easier and if there was, you know, the ability for the city to assist in whatever way, that, that whole belief would change because again, right now, it's difficult for that to happen, so.
That could be the case, that very well could be the case.
Okay, I'll save my other questions for now.
Okay, Councilmember Armendaras.
I might have forgotten my question. You can hold, I can go to public comment. Um, no, I was regarding parking structures. Was there any exploration of that or any feedback from the community about a need? And at what point in terms of parking demand on a, on a trajectory would you see Gilroy needing a parking structure in terms of years?
Yeah. So in terms of, we could, we could better plot that out. On, I'll say right now, you do not need a parking structure currently. That would be, they come at enormous costs, I'll back up a second. So parking structures normally typically, depending on where you are, will cost between about $30,000, $50,000 per space. That does not include your operations maintenance costs, which are about $500 per space per year. That will, I'm giving you very general numbers. I've seen parking structures that have been $80,000 a space, I've seen some that are $30,000 a space, but regardless, they're very expensive, so we want to be careful in implementing them. I've also seen some communities, like I did some work down Oxnard years ago, and they thought, gosh, we're gonna build this parking structure and that's gonna help stimulate economic development. Well, they built a four-story parking structure and the first story was used, and the other three stories remained empty for years. Because having a parking is not necessarily a destination in itself for people to come to. That said, you do need it, right, if you have sufficient demand. And so we can, what I would say is between your scale now versus your full general plan build-out, you could get here maybe in 10 years and look at it again and say, gosh, you know, we've actually maybe, this actually may pencil out for us at this time. To be honest, it's also a function of land value. Building a parking structure here is not the same thing as building a parking structure in Palo Alto, for example. The land values are just higher, it makes more sense to be able to build structured parking in a setting like that. Again, land values here could change, and it might change the math of the, math of the equation. So I don't have, I apologize, I don't have a perfect answer for you at this moment, but that would be certainly something to, to look at in the future. But I would recommend that the city always weigh it against the cost of other options.
Thank you. Councilmember Bracco?
Yes, I, I share the mayor's concern over how it was done. I'm concerned, our, our, the parking problems we have are in like a three-block area of Monterey Street. And by throwing in all these other parkings and, and City Hall parking, it skews everything. It makes it look better than it is. Because, and this is a problem I, I addressed when we, the council approved hiring someone from out of town to come and tell us that it's not as bad as you experience when you go downtown. You know, don't believe your lying eyes. And, you know, we, we spent a million dollars a number of years ago in Dwyer finding signs and everything downtown. I don't believe that's a problem because our public lots are full all the time. You can't park in them. And you're not addressing the one parking lot across from the post office. But how do we, what do we do to handle that? Because it's full of parking, of parking from the post office from their employees. They take up the parking. So, and, and the, I don't believe there's a, much of a turnover in, in our public lots. And then we have other parking lots on the other side of Monterey, we have one that's not utilized at all. And there are signs pointing it out, but I don't know if it's just too far. And then a lot of our parking lots and side parking, it's dark. So especially females, they don't want to walk on those dark streets at night. So, I mean, this, I would like to see that addressed. Thank you.
Sure. We do, just to speak to that for a second, we did talk with, well, the previous project managers here at the city about, you know, improved lighting and more safety measures, and they had said, you know, it's not really a transportation measure, so asked that we don't include that in the report. We can include it if that's what you're, if that's what you think is a positive, a good option for it.
Oh, no, I just want to make a comment to-
Sorry, sorry. And then just last two, it was in terms of, you know, whether there's a parking problem or, or not, there were certainly some, it was, the public feedback on this really stretched the gamut. There were some folks who said, yes, I cannot find a parking space right in front of where I want to go, this is a problem. And we had other people say, there is no parking problem. It's really varied across the board here. We looked at the downtown as a whole, simply to look at the whole downtown because that's essentially what we're tasked with, knowing that all your demand is highly concentrated in the middle. So I do understand, I, I want you to, I just want to acknowledge what you said, that yeah, your demand is concentrated in the middle, but even looking at, over the course of three days, many different hours, there are still opportunities nearby to park, generally speaking. Now, again, you might not park, be able to park right where you want to, and that's oftentimes what people want.
These people that you talk to, how many people did you talk to?
I'd have to go, these are, I didn't, these are not people I talked to. We actually had an online survey and collected feedback from people. So these are people who actually wrote to us and said, yes, there's a parking problem, no, there's not a parking problem. I think we actually have it in the report. So you could read some of the actual-
There were 65.
There's 65, yeah. So you can go in and see the comments yourself. So that's why I say it's, it's, it's very, it's varied, I would say.
Okay. Councilmember Marks is next, I'm sorry, Councilmember Tovar.
No, that's okay, I was just gonna say there's 65.
Oh, okay. So you, your hand is not raised anymore?
I can't take it down.
Oh, I don't, okay, there, it's down. Okay, Councilmember Tovar, you have another question?
Yeah, well, more of a comment, and goes to what Councilmember Bracco said, it, it sickens me that somebody who no longer works here and didn't live here, recommended that we don't look into lighting because that's absolutely false, because when we first talked about this, that was one of the one things they said that we needed to do for our parking lots, the one that's on Seventh Street or the one that's on Railroad out there, and that we would never utilize that until we made those parking lots safe. And to hear that somebody recommended, from the city recommended, that we do not include lighting and safety, I mean, that's-
No, just to be clear, I think-
It's idiotic if that's what you're telling me.
No, so what I, what I'm saying is they were do, the idea was that lighting was a separate issue that was being handled in a different way, but not necessarily in this report. So it wasn't that lighting wasn't important or, or, you know, valued, but, and again, we're hap, I'm happy to bring it up in this report, but again, there's general safety concerns that affect parking overall.
Right.
That, I mean, frankly, we, we can't control everything. I mean, there are, you know, better enforcement, downtown ambassadors are often things that downtowns have employed to try to improve the feeling of safety. Lighting is great, cameras are great, but what people really need to feel safe is other people on the street.
Right, but we have to start somewhere.
No, 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 absolutely, I'm not saying no.
And we're gonna do, we're gonna go through this for years and years and years and not actually get to the root of the problem where that, those parking lots are never gonna be utilized.
Yep.
Because we don't have the funds to, to hire a few more police officers. So what do we do in the meantime? Again, being proactive and not reactive, which I will say here, right? So I mean, it would be nice to have something in there.
I know, okay. So Council-
That was my problem.
It's, it's quite a thorough report that's gonna take us a lot of time, I think, all of us to digest, and we just need to start with some direction here. And as we narrow down where we think the parking problems are, then we can address other things. Like if this is a particular lot that we think more people should be using, then what do we need to do to make them use it? That's okay, but you have to, you have, this, I think this project was meant to identify where the spaces are. Are they being used? How frequently are they being used? When are they being used? So that we can then determine how to move forward, with all kinds of things. Whether it's lighting that gets people to park there, whether it's with time restrictions, whether we enforce certain ones and not others, whatever it is. Okay?
Yeah, no, no, and I, I'm, I'll-
Right, all right.
I'll give my comments.
Okay, so I would, we have at least one person who I know wants to speak. So Matthew Gallion, you've got three minutes at the podium.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Um, thank you for taking the time to hear me. What I'd like to talk about in reference is page number 306 out of your agenda packet for this evening, which does highlight that parking is not an issue in downtown, according to the people that they heard from for this survey. What is a big issue is attracting more people to downtown. Currently, the people feel that downtown is not a safe place, it's not well-lit, there are homeless people all about, and they don't feel comfortable parking two blocks away to go walk to the place they want to go to, because they might encounter some unsavory characters, or they just might not feel safe in general. So I would caution you guys on advising, changing up parking and things like that, imposing restrictions for people that want to support the businesses in downtown, and I'd like to encourage you to make it more friendly for them, make it more friendly for food trucks. You know, that's an issue in here. They want to see food trucks in downtown, they want to see new businesses in downtown. They want to come to downtown, they want to feel safe, they want to spend their money in downtown. And so while we're going through all this, and it's a very detailed report, and I happen to go through a good amount of it, parking's not an issue. Whether one small little tiny area of it is, you have a whole lot of other area to park in. And if you don't want to walk the couple of blocks, then perhaps there's a safety concern. Perhaps it's a, a different concern other than X number of parking spots in X number of area, or someone stayed there, you know, a little bit longer than two hours because they were enjoying an establishment in downtown. So I would just like to caution you and take some time to go through the report and come up with a good strategy for it, and perhaps think of ways to make downtown more vibrant and attract more people to downtown. I would love to see that in the future, 100% full parking everywhere, because our downtown is booming and everybody wants to be down here, but it's currently not there, and we have a large number of vacant spaces at any given time during the day. Because I'm down there probably more than most people, and I see it. You can drive down there almost every night, and there's plenty of parking for everyone. Thank you.
All right, are we here? Do we have any other speakers?
No speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay, closing public comment. This comes back to council, we're just looking for direction. How, where do we want staff to focus their time, given all the things that are in this report, even if we can't come up with everything tonight, but Councilmember Tovar?
Thank you. Well, I have a recommendation, looking at the Phase One and Phase Two, obviously, and you had mentioned, or the strategy, you had mentioned that Phase Two wasn't really a priority or wasn't high on the list, right? That we really didn't need those, is what I think you said.
So my, I guess the best way to put it is you can't employ any of those, but just expect them to come at higher cost management.
Exactly. So what I'm looking at, what I would like to recommend for Phase One is that we, we add the parking business district recommendation, it's in Phase Two, which is part of our Phase Two recommendation, is part of our Phase Two recommendation, right? Since we're already undergoing a feasibility study, public outrage, and RP bid for downtown. So again, I don't see, I mean, it, it's a match, right? So obviously, when you look, you know, talking about downtown, things that we can, you know, with street cleaning, sidewalk cleaning, lighting, graffiti removal, signage, security, all of that, all of that can be incorporated by incorporating, you know, what I just said, the P bid and also the parking. So I would like to add that to Phase One.
So he, that means you're, you're asking the rest of this council if they want to, yeah. He's not giving you direction.
Sorry, no, no, I'm not doing that.
No, no, that's fine, I'm just making notes.
I don't want to look over there, because they're going to tell me to shut up, so.
Okay.
But no, that's what I'm saying. I would like for us to add that component to Phase One, because again, it helps us eventually when we get there with some of the funding that we're talking about that we may not have, so.
Which one in particular, Councilmember?
It's the, Phase Two, it's the Parking Benefit District, the PBD.
Okay. I, I'm just going to focus on the first phase first, and it's not-
Well-
Can we go back to the first phase?
Yeah.
Just look at those strategies again. A couple of things I would, are we going to speak there?
Yeah, I, but I think Carol, Councilmember Marks is speaking right now.
You know, let's go back to, yeah, Phase One, and I think we should do this by phases, see what-
I do too.
How we feel about each part of the phase.
You mean each individual?
Well, okay, I see parking regulations, okay.
Well, we don't have them on one slide.
So, Phase One.
Is Phase One the immediate action strategies?
Yes.
Is that, okay.
Oh, all right.
That's Phase One.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at, yeah.
Okay.
I apologize, we don't have them all summarized on one slide.
Okay.
All right, okay.
Seventy-three.
Can we go just quickly through the immediate-
It's on page 162, if you can access that.
Yes, okay.
And Councilmember Arminderis, did you have a question on this part of it?
On, from Phase One-
Yeah.
Something that I did like is the idea of a public-private partnership. I think we have some, you know, some vacant buildings, some places that closed, like the dentist shop next to the dally, where the motorcycle shop used to be, right, between Fourth and Fifth, that, I mean, it's empty. It's empty after a certain hour, after two, three o'clock, and I'd like staff to have some conversations, or engage our downtown business association to talk to some of the property owners, to see if we can get some, some partnership there, from some of our private lot owners.
Okay.
Especially on the ends of town, right on the ends of downtown, there's a lot of private parking that can be. If we could incentivize it in some way, too, I'd love to explore that, because there's some, some spots that would be good parking if they were improved, like at Old Gilroy and Monterey. You know, there's a lot of parking there next to the Garcia's, if they had an improved parking lot.
Okay. Councilmember Marks, did you have something to add in this section?
I just got to 162, go ahead.
Okay, so, under the immediate action strategies, I mean, I, I absolutely think we should be identifying where our parking lots are better. So, and I agree, we, I know we do, Councilmember Brockle, we do have signs, but they really aren't that great. And I love the ones that say, it's a six-minute walk to here, or a three-minute walk to there, from a certain parking lot. That would, that would really help. So I would, I personally would support Strategy One. I wouldn't go to Strategy Two yet, which is the VTA parking lot, because again, I would really like to keep that to encourage transit riders. Shared parking agreements, that's fine. I have yet to come up with a private owner who would want to do that, but that doesn't mean there isn't one out there. Mobility information, absolutely. That's just us, the city, putting out better information on how people can get around, whether it's through our website, or whatever other sources are. And on-street time restrictions should definitely be there. I was surprised to see as many complying as they do, based on the survey, because I thought it was worse than that, but I'm glad that it's at least that much. But it is, I know that it is very much abused in the later evening hours. It is, it's, it's not, it doesn't turn over in, in the evening as much, in, in the core downtown.
Can I just add one, one comment on that?
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, it's also, it's within your right to give direction, too. Right now, for example, your, your time limits go from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, which means, it's a two-hour time-
Right, after six, it's a free-for-all, right.
After four o'clock, it's a free-for-all. After the four o'clock, you stay two hours, and you can basically stay there until tomorrow at 11:00 AM.
Right.
So if the council's direction, and I mentioned it earlier, but if the council's direction is to look at shifting your time, because your morning parking demand is, at 9:00 AM is not high-
Right.
But maybe shifting that forward an hour or two, we can certainly look at that.
Yeah.
But again, I'll leave that to you.
Okay, so I, I would support that. I would also support Parklet Design Standards and leasing parking spaces. That should absolutely be, be things we do. So for me, it's pretty much everything on the immediate action strategies, which is Phase One, with the exception of looking at VTA. Not that I care, if someone wants to take the time to look at VTA, that's fine, but I know what VTA's position is. So, so does that, maybe we'll do it in this section by section. Is there counsel support for-
I think that's a good, I think that's a good starting spot for staff.
Yes. Okay, Jimmy wants to say something.
I think Mr. Tovar's request about the Parking Benefit District could be addressed shortly, when we come and give a report on the P bid. We're working through that process right now with the downtown. We'll have a report shortly. So that might be the springboard to the next part of that conversation. So I know that's in Strategy Two, but we're already working on it, so it's going to come back anyway. And so I think that could help address those questions.
Let me just make sure, no, and I appreciate that, but when you say it's coming back, my concern, you know, what information is going to be brought back, if it's not working, I mean, I'm just going to get rid of it, that's, you know, we're going to just dump it. That's my concern, is that here's an opportunity for us to say, let's incorporate that into our Phase One, instead of hearing that it's not working for us so far. You follow what I'm saying? I just worry that, you know, we're gonna, that ship's going to pass, and we're not going to have that opportunity to incorporate that, given what it can do for our downtown.
Thank you, Mr. Tovar. The report will provide to council, will determine if there's a legal threshold met, to establish a P bid election. If there's not, then we are done with the process. If there is, then the process will continue. So there is a threshold we have to get from the property owners before we continue down the P bid, P bid process.
They have to buy in, enough of them.
No, I, I know they have to buy in, right.
Okay, so I'm coming back to council to see if we have consensus for this Phase One part. Council, oh, consent, I thought you had something to say. Do we have consensus?
Yeah.
Okay, so we will look at everything, I'm just suggesting except the VTA one, because that's not going to go anywhere. Yeah, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, I think it's important for the consultant to explain what he does with that direction, because the report states you're going to finalize your report. So I think for expectations, what, what does this mean now that you have this kind of focus?
Thank you.
So, so as I understand you correctly, where the direction is to pursue six of the seven strategies that are listed in the immediate action, and basically take the VTA one off the table, which is fine, we can, that's easy enough to take off. We already discussed the parking regulations, about exploring, potentially looking at different times. So that's one change that we'll look at. We'll have to look at, go back to the data, to see what makes sense or not. The other recommendations in here, you know, Parklet Design Standards, Leasing Parking Spaces, the mobility information, I mean, the shared parking, what, what we'll do is actually add, or we'll, we'll provide it to the city, we have a draft legal document that the city can use, as a, as a template for actually setting up potential parking agreements. And I'm happy to actually broker a conversation with a contact of mine who has implemented over eighty of these. If they, if the desire is to actually have a person who's experienced in this, I'm happy to do that as well. On these other pieces, I, I guess, I mean, I, I'm not really sure if you're asking me to make changes, for example, to the mobility information, or just saying it's good as is.
It's probably a direct, yeah, that, you're saying that you're recommending that the staff would implement it, yeah.
Yes, I think there's some that we just take, because they're-
Exactly.
They're administering, but there's the pieces that council's looking to have developed more, so they can give us as staff more direction, and I think you outline that.
Okay.
Mayor, before we go on, again-
Well, I don't think he's finished.
Okay.
No, no, I'm done.
Okay, sorry.
So, yeah, and I, I understand we're going to come back with the P bid, but we all know there's a difference between the P bid and a Parking Benefit District, is what I'm asking for, because again, that can help us with lighting, security, enforcement. So Phase Two Strategies, I would like to bring the Parking Benefit District into Phase One.
Can I also ask you just a clarifying question as well? We kind of lumped them together, and I apologize for this, just for brevity's sake on the slide, but there's also, there's, and I was actually going to ask the same question, because a P bid and a PBD are two different things.
Right, right.
And similarly, there's also a Transportation Management Association, which you can set up. So there's different, there's different ways to go about this, but again, I don't know enough about your P bid process to see how that overlaps, too. So I'll just wait for your direction.
Right, but maybe you can educate us on the Parking Benefit.
Well, the Parking Benefit District, the idea of it is that any revenues that you generate from that district, whether they be meter revenues, which frankly don't exist right now, to anything, to parking in lieu fees or fines, stay within that district. And they're used for the purposes of that body, which normally the Parking Benefit District is comprised of a body of private representatives and public, to be able to jointly represent the city.
Which is beneficial.
Well, but nothing we've, nothing this council majority just said to move forward on brings in any revenue. We're not talking about revenue right now.
Okay.
Okay, so we have to wait and see, I think we need to wait and see. I know, we don't want to wait, but we have to see what, what, what this process of our downtown businesses turns out to be, how we, how we move forward with, with any kind of district.
Okay, so-
And when we, if we get to where we're going to start fining for parking, and we hire an officer, and we actually enforce through punitive, which is what that is, right? That's a punitive enforcement, then we can talk about where that money's going and reinvesting it. But so far, we're trying not to take punitive things. Okay?
Yeah, I'm not looking at punitive, I'm looking at the benefits of it, so.
Well, it, but it has to have a funding stream, right? It's not how I have a district.
So Jimmy, does this give you enough, is this enough information for staff, or is there something more we should be addressing here tonight, on this item?
No, I think we get clear direction.
Are we going to hit Phase Two? Just because I have something for Phase Two.
Go ahead and ask the question, because I think he was just trying to say that-
No, 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 I'm-
Okay, go-
I suggest, because I think the last report from our chief, it's been years, but lets us know that the downtown area isn't more dangerous than any other part of town, it's just the perception of it, right? And so things like lighting, or, you know, law enforcement being more present, those type of things, they cost money, but can we look into what an ambassador would do? Because you were saying, right, people feel safe when there's more people down there. And is there voluntary ambassador programs, or, or things like that? Can we look into that?
Yeah, so-
You know, if we don't have the crime stats, we can't justify it.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't have the, I don't have the crime stats, unfortunately, yeah. But just to, just to expand a little bit about what an ambassador program is, is you'll see this in some cities, where essentially they're either volunteers, most of the time they're paid staff, but it's not necessarily, you know, a high, high-paid thing. But folks who are essentially, normally you'll see them around, they'll be wearing like a red jacket or something that's very, like, noticeable. And they're, they're basically to help and assist people, right? So they're there to walk people to their cars, they're there to give people directions, they're there, people, and again, you only can maybe need a few of them, but just so you know they're around. And so it's, again, though, typically you do need some sort of funding source for this, even if it's relatively limited, which is why it ended up in this strategy. We, trust me, we went back and forth on this about what strategies to include upfront and not, because there is definitely a feeling that safety needs to be improved, but we didn't have much direction on all the financial options that we laid forth.
Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, are we ready to move on for now? Thank you.
No, but-
Well, I'm sorry. You are one.
All right.
Thank you, though.
Talk about generating funds.
Okay, 11.2, Review of the City of Gilroy Municipal Code, Chapter 16A, Article Two, Mobile Vending Permits and Enforcement. And is this going to be, yes, it's going to be Bryce?
Excuse me, Mayor and Council. Staff is coming before council to discuss the current mobile vending code, and the transition to more proactive enforcement, and to see if there's any desire of council to issue any direction related to that, before we start down that road. So briefly, mobile vendors are regulated by City Code, Chapter 16A, adopted in 1997, so it's 26 years old. It is intended to regulate traffic safety, litter, parking, and health and safety issues related to mobile vending. It's important to note that based on provisions, it's definitely more geared towards ice cream trucks and that type of mobile vending. And we'll kind of go over that here in a little bit, in the provisions, we talk about them. So some of those provisions, mobile vendors are required to get a permit from the police department. Amongst other information that's required, the process includes a background check. Again, really kind of focused towards ice cream trucks and things that would attract children, make sure that anybody that's doing that vending doesn't have any more interpretive in their, or evidence of it in their, in their history. Mobile vendors cannot locate in private property without property owner approval, and then also depending on the length of time, a temporary use permit possibly. And then they cannot locate near elementary or junior high schools. They must relocate every 10 minutes, by a distance of at least 100 feet, per code, as it is written today. And they cannot locate in a commercial district, C1, 2, or 3. So mobile vendors are required to get several permits. After the city, there's two. There's the mobile vendor permit from the police department, $152 is the initial application fee, and the $79 each year for renewal. That's based on the current, current fee schedule. They're also required to get a business license from the finance department, $40 base fee plus a $40 increment, add on top, based on gross receipts. Again, that's also in our user fees. For food-related mobile vendors, they're also required to get a county permit from the Department of Public Health. The vendor permit can range anywhere from approximately $230 to $840. And then there's also facility inspection, other permitting requirements. Those costs can vary from several hundred to several thousand dollars, depending on what permits are required at the county's discretion. So looking at enforcement, talking to the police department representatives, during and after the pandemic, they've been primarily complaint-driven. So before the pandemic, according to PD, they've averaged six licensed vendors per year. Last year, they only had two licensed mobile vendors, and this year, so far, they've had none, though they did comment that three applications are currently in process. The post-pandemic decrease in licensed mobile vendors has typically been associated with non-enforcement during the pandemic. Then there was also some questions when S-972 is being adopted, which is the sidewalk vending permit, which, that was recently resolved with council not too long ago. And then complaint-driven versus proactive enforcement has also been an allocation of resources issue, making sure that we have, you know, enough staff to accomplish what we must do in, in enforcing laws, and versus, you know, vendor, mobile vendor enforcement, and what staffing we have available at the time. But staff is shifting towards proactive enforcement, in line with sidewalk vending approach. We're looking at that sidewalk vending process, education, before enforcement as, as the general model. And so police and code enforcement are coordinating that effort at this point in time, looking towards early part of 2024. It's looking right now, and according on enforcement, the city code is in effect currently, which we anticipate that we will receive complaints, again, primarily around the 10-minute relocation requirement. In the code, there is no exception to that. There's not, there's no differentiation on types of mobile vendors in the code, so every vendor must comply with the 10-minute relocation requirement. On one hand, it does resolve any parking issues with mobile vendors. They can still locate in parking stalls, but again, only for 10 minutes. We will likely receive complaints from food trucks primarily, that would be able to just start warming up their equipment before having to relocate again. And then additionally, the commercial zone prohibition, I mentioned, the commercial zones, C1 through 3, has diminished over time. So this code being adopted in 1997, you have areas where different specific plans have been adopted. So prime example is downtown, specific plan was adopted in 2005, change land use zoning, so now, in the past, it was prohibited, now it's not prohibited, so they would be able to locate in the downtown. Fiscal impact, enforcing as it is, is just some staff time and resources, offset with application fees and fines from violations. No budget impact is anticipated from that. Alternatives, council may direct staff to alter its enforcement approach, or to amend the city code to provide greater ease or greater restriction to mobile vendors. Should council determine to amend this code, staff does have a few suggestions as possible starting points. Want to be increasing the timeframe for mobile vendors to be in one location, but maybe restrict the amount of parking spaces they can take. Another option is valuing the conditions on permitting, if appropriate, to vary by the nature of mobile vending, hot food versus ice cream trucks. And then also reviewing and amending place-based regulations on mobile vending. So looking at commercial reclassification, as I mentioned, at C1 to C3, maybe looking at the downtown area, considering the parking management results. And then also, are there certain restrictions that would be placed near certain areas or types of establishments? So is there a distance, say, from intersections that you want a food truck to locate, or, you know, adjacent to restaurants or bars, et cetera. So ultimately, next step, staff will commence enhanced enforcement efforts as described, and if council provides any direction, staff will pursue implementation of such direction. That completes the presentation, and happy to ask questions.
Okay, thank you. I'll, yeah, go ahead. Oh, okay, then, yeah, go ahead. I've got some myself, but go ahead.
So are you recommending that we keep it with the police department? Because that seems not very good.
Yeah, so the, the code currently places the responsibility for mobile vending on the police department. So everything's in there. Again, it may be one of those things where the ordinance was adopted back in 97, at the time, maybe the resources were a little differently, as far as availability. So that's one thing in the enforcement that we're going forward, is a coordinated effort between police department and code enforcement. There are obviously times where food truck, is that where code enforcement officers may not be available, and so it's really just enhancing eyes on, on the scene. But again, that's the current code as stated as the police department.
Because I think we need to simplify it. I mean, we, we just did the downtown vendor ordinance, pretty much copy that to this, and, you know, change whatever we need to, to apply to a, a, a food truck, but I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel. And I would like to see us discuss a possibility of assigning an area downtown somewhere, where we can have mobile vending, where it'll become like an attraction in itself, to draw more people downtown.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Klein?
Oh, it was on there, too, Mayor, right before Klein.
Sorry, I don't see it.
That's okay.
Go ahead.
And I think Fred has his hand up, too.
Yeah, I'll wait, I'll wait till then.
Okay, I'm having to wait, too, I'm going to forget my questions. Okay, go ahead. Okay, go ahead.
So, a couple things. The ordinance that we created for sidewalk vendors made it prohibitively expensive and administratively too cumbersome for our street vendors, right, for our food cart vendors to exist at all in our city, and I honestly think that was by design. It's made our downtown seem less lively, it's, there's less foot traffic, right, when we're driving through, significantly less food traffic, and so, foot traffic, so I don't think that we should be doing the same thing or trying to do the same thing to our, to our food trucks. Our parking consultant just, just noted, right, as does all the other data in terms of economic development for cities, that customers are looking for experiences, right, they're looking for variety, and when we have a variety of vendors who offer different cuisine, they offer something just outside of the norm of our, of our brick and mortars, they're adding to our downtown culture, they're bringing people in, and they complement, right, they'll complement our new, our bowling alley, they're gonna complement all the, the new breweries, right, they don't distract. I think we saw from the amount of customers that our sidewalk vendors were drawing in, that there's enough to go around. And so I honestly hope that we don't become the town from Footloose, right, where we ban this and ban that and ban music and ban rock, you know what I mean?
Okay.
Like dancing, I'm not done yet, man.
No, it was the crowd, okay? I need to say that you're not supposed to clap, because everybody's entitled to an opinion, and when you do that, it makes it difficult for someone who has a different opinion to feel safe in the space, so I'm gonna ask you to please not applaud and not shout out from the, from the audience, thank you.
So, but just to, you know, to end, I just, we, with our, with live music, right, all the, the sound ordinance, with all these other things that are adding up, just feels very much like we're headed to, to be that, that town, you know, and we want our downtown businesses to thrive, and that comes from variety and experience and, you know, music and these entrepreneurs, right, who work very hard, and I think we need to make things easier on our sidewalk vendors and more welcoming to, to our food trucks, that's all.
Okay, now, is it Councilmember Klein or Councilmember Marks, who's next? Okay, Councilmember Klein.
Well, I would say, this is kind of updating, just taking the ordinance and what it's for is, is updating it, but to me, we need to be creative too and finding, because things have changed since then in what we want, our habits and things that we like, and food trucks is a big part of that, so I think that's where, I think we should be looking creatively at that and how that would be, how we can make that work in downtown, because it is something people want, and we need to look at that really openly to see what we can do.
Councilmember Marks.
I agree with Councilmember Klein, I want to see some real creative ideas, and I see we have a list of people who are willing, are wanting to come up and talk, and when you come up and talk, what I personally would like to hear from you is your creative ideas on how this would work, what you would like to do. I mean, as I was sitting here, I kept thinking about what would really work well for the downtown, and I'd like to hear how, if you agree with that idea. I was thinking how we close off Fifth Street on Friday, Saturday nights between Eagleberry and Monterey and all the food trucks go there. I would like to hear, is that a possibility to help your establishments? Because I'm assuming that the taprooms allow food to come in, that people purchase, is that?
Yep.
You know, okay, I can't ask you that, but I hope when you're talking to us, you relay that to us, you know, do you allow customers to come into your establishments with food purchased from the food truck?
They do, I've done it.
Okay, so, you know, would closing off a street in the middle of town be something that you'd be excited about, because would that allow everyone to go to one area, buy their food, and then go to whatever establishment they want to go to? So I am looking for solutions that you're gonna bring to us.
Okay.
Okay?
Councilmember Tovar.
Thank you, Mayor. So, again, I'm trying to, trying to reiterate a lot of what's been said up here, especially what Councilmember Armandaris mentioned about, you know, making sure we don't ban the food trucks. Bryce, and I know you've been to downtown and you know firsthand that these food trucks bring business activity downtown and help our businesses, you know that, right, because you've been downtown, right?
Okay, Councilmember, you're not addressing staff, you're talking to the council.
I am.
Okay.
I'm making a point here.
So don't look at him.
I'm not directing him, I'm making a point here. And as mentioned in our Phase 1 recommendations, obviously this is part of our Phase 1 recommendations, from our parking management, so, you know, one of the things I brought up earlier was in our parking management report, the new parking lot was not included in the parking spaces available. So we do have enough parking where we can allow food trucks in downtown, right? I don't see it as it's gonna, it's gonna hinder parking, because we have plenty of parking. So again, I think, I'm in favor of making sure that we don't ban this and that we make it as, as Councilmember Brockel said, make it an easy process for, for food trucks. Not directing you, just making a comment.
Thank you, yeah, I didn't read anything that, I don't think anybody is suggesting banning food trucks, like, nobody was suggesting banning sidewalk vending either. We have a responsibility to make sure things are licensed, when people are selling food, that they have a health department license, that they aren't causing harm and danger to other people, and that was all the stuff that we addressed over the months, that we were looking at sidewalk street vending. So I, I am not going to, we are not supposed to be rehashing the sidewalk street vending ordinance, that was something that already went through the council, already went through the public process, that is the ordinance that we have implemented. We're here tonight to talk about the food trucks, and I would like to start by going to slide four, if you don't mind. So, is this saying, I mean, this is such an old ordinance that I, I'm not even comfortable that this is our starting point, but it, it is, because that's all we have on the books. But what do you mean by that third bullet point? Last year, last year, do you mean in 2022? Bryce, on this third bullet point?
Yes, so this is a version from the police department, I believe it was 2022 for last year.
Okay, so, so in 20.
This is calendar year.
So this is saying that in 2022, only two mobile vendors, and I assume this means food trucks?
Correct.
Okay, were licensed.
Correct, my understanding.
And in 2023, none?
That's my understanding from police.
So the food trucks that we see, that we've all seen, that have been since January of this year, none of them are licensed?
Currently, yes, they did say that there are three applications currently in process.
Okay, okay, so I hope that what we're here to address is not to ban anything, but how, how do we go about changing an ordinance that is outdated, completely old, update it for the times? We know there are food trucks, we know people like food trucks, we know that there are businesses that want food trucks near them, so that should be our discussion, is how do we get them licensed? If they're gonna take up public, public parking, like Parklets do, like, like that, that we have to start talking about encroachment permits? Because if you're going to use a public space and you're gonna use it for a certain period of time, then that is something that should be discussed, with how, how are you going to regulate? You can't, private, public property can't just be, shouldn't just be free to the first person who goes and stakes it out. I mean, there ought to be rules as to how one goes about it from another, doesn't mean you can't have them, it means you have to establish the process, something we have not yet done. So that's how I would like to see us proceed, is how do we make it so that we can have food trucks, so that it is fair to all? Do we want to consider having a location that allows for them to be there, that is a once-a-week thing, where they're, everybody knows that this is the, like we used to, we used to have in the gourmet alley when it was just lined with food trucks for a Thursday night, things like that? Those are the things I'd like to see us discussing, not until we've heard public comment, but that's how I think we should go. Okay? Is there anyone else who has something burning to say before I go to public comment?
I do.
I have questions.
Okay, Councilmember Armandaris, and then we'll go back to Councilmember Tovar.
Thank you. So, mobile food trucks are also subject to SB 1972?
From my understanding, not the way that there's been, they weren't part of the ordinance that was adopted under the city code. So, so the sidewalk vending that would just process, food trucks is not listed as one of those that's in the definition that falls under that, so these still fall under the current code. The delay, I think, was determining, from my understanding, was determining if food trucks would fall under the sidewalk vending.
No. Under the state, the Senate bill, 972.
Correct, that's what I'm saying, I think my, my understanding was that the delay was in giving the announcement to see if that would fall under, replace food trucks under sidewalk vending, which my understanding is it does not.
Okay, so we can't regulate them more than we regulate a brick and mortar, is that also true?
I'd have to defer.
Based on 972, right, we can't say, you can only be in, here on Thursday nights, you can only be in the alley, you can only be on Eagleberry, right, we can't do that based on 972.
Councilmember Armandaris, 972 does not apply to food trucks. It applies to sidewalk vending, so you can regulate at whatever level the council chooses.
Okay.
Right, and, and the level of regulation is unrelated to the regulation on other businesses.
Right. That's why my question was, if it's subject to 972? And it's not.
It's not, right.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Tovar?
Thank you. Bryce, in one of your slides, you had some, something there, talked about a 10-minute time limit. Can you explain what that means to me, please?
Yeah, so, under the current code, as it's written today, mobile vendors must relocate every 10 minutes from their location. Again, this is why, why our understanding is that the ice cream trucks is the primary driver for the code language it was written, because.
This was back in the 80s.
Right.
Yeah, for ice cream trucks.
So that doesn't, it's not applying, because again, talking, going about, you know, not banning, I mean, that doesn't apply to the food trucks?
It does currently. Again, this is one of the things where.
So it goes back to my comments.
If enforced, if enforced under the code as it's currently written, then that would be your apartment we have to enforce.
Right, and I know we're gonna talk this through, but that goes back to the comment I made about making sure we don't ban food trucks, and that 10-minute time limit does exactly that.
No, I don't think anyone on this council is supporting that, that is.
I'm sharing with you what's, what we have, and if we move forward with this, that's what it's doing, I know that, I know no one wants to ban them, but that language, that.
And we haven't been enforcing that, that's been on the books since the 80s, and no one's been enforcing it, food trucks have been parked wherever they've been parked all night long. Okay.
They're still there.
Okay, yes, that's why we're addressing it tonight. Okay, let's go to public comment. Open public comment, I see 10 speakers, is that right?
That is where I meant to.
All right, so that's two minutes, everybody, if you please come up, oh, I guess I should call the names. Miguel, James, and Sheila, you're the first three, if you don't mind, coming up, and if you know you're, you're gonna speak, can you please come sit in the front row, that way this can just go more smoothly? You should see your time, hopefully, right there on that screen, okay, go ahead.
Okay, good evening, first I want to commend you guys on the Christmas parade and the veteran parade, my two-year-old daughter loved it. That said, I'm gonna go into this, I'm sharing a brief history by myself and my contacts, I'm Miguel Falcón, I'm originally from New York, but proactive resident, helpful neighbor and Gilroy community member, I'm a Marine veteran, San Jose State graduate, graduate and new Gilroy homeowner since 2020. I hope to bring an objective opinion to the food truck topic, I want to echo the feelings and statements of others when I say, let's not make things harder for the food trucks, let's not diminish them via the idiom of death by a thousand cuts. If they are abiding by the requirements of the county, let's practice spirit of law and not so much the stern letter of law. To be frank, the insurance requirements set by the specific city for food trucks would not be ethically sound nor inclusive to these vendors offering the services to Gilroy. For someone paying Santa Clara County taxes, we want Santa Clara County experience, we should welcome and incentivize these small businesses, these small business entrepreneurs that come and cater to us, not scare them away or deter them. Gilroy PD is doing an excellent job with their tools, and are already stretched in bandwidth, the collateral duty should be focused more on serious fields and sectors instead of the licensing and enforcement of food trucks. The burden of permit compliance, compliance should fall upon a different department or office within the city of Gilroy. The requirement that all employees be listed on a permit is not rational for a dynamic minimum wage-paying job with frequent call-outs, let's not forget privacy concerns. I firmly believe a reevaluation of the permit licensing stuff should be considered, I hope a fair, understanding, empathetic, timely, and lastly, cost-considered solution is achieved, not, not a solution influenced by personal business interests or conflicts of interest. I have a lot more I could say, but time's running out, and I won't give other people a chance, thanks and have a good evening.
Thank you. All right, James Azar, and then Sheila.
Hello, first of all, I just wanted to say, I am an owner and operator of a food truck, my wife and I, we own Papusa Lady, we've been coming here for about three years now, and it's been an incredible experience, where I've had to partner with the community and, and business owners as well, but it also provided us other opportunities to be interwoven with the community. We've partnered up with the Gilroy Public Schools, we've, we're here when Dolores Huerta was here, we've done the Thursday Night Live, so it's, it's really provided an opportunity for us to be within the community. Being a South County resident myself, it's important to, to have a place to go where you can go and experience things, so I'm on two sides, I've lived in this area for eight years, I've been coming to Gilroy, I live in Morgan Hill, but I come to Gilroy for the experience, and over the last three years, it's been great, we've had an amazing response here, and we love coming to Gilroy. Having heard what has been happening lately with the street vendors, it's kind of disheartening because, two things, one is, it seems that these, obviously the laws seem antiquated, and I don't envy your job of figuring this out, but something has to be done, so I'm gonna spend the rest of my time giving some insight and feedback for you guys. So, I know that from the streets from 4th to 6th, the parking spaces are parallel to the street, and those are more, most conducive to the food trucks that can open to flaps, the ones.
Diagonal.
Oh, me?
They're diagonal.
Oh.
Those spaces are diagonal, they're not parallel.
There are some that are.
One or two.
Okay, I'm so sorry, so to, so to not, for safety reasons, to have something where that's another set-off area, honestly, we don't come down, we come down here maybe twice a month, and Thursday through Sunday would be the most optimal times for us to come down, we won't come down on Monday or Tuesday, because it's just not, it's busy. So that time period, lunch and dinner would be, would be most optimal, so just to have a designated space.
Thank you, the time is up, and any of you can write, you know, to the council too, for we, we don't have time to say here, you can put in writing and send, okay? Sheila Monger?
Hi, good evening, I just, just like to comment that the food trucks and other food vendors have been such a joy to explore when we are downtown. The variety is exciting, and it's always a way to enhance our experience when we are here. We've been very pleased with all of the service and the quality of each of the vendors. We have noticed that the foot traffic is always better when the food vendors, food trucks are present, the breweries and tap houses are flourishing. However, we do know that when the discussion turns to ways to restrict access and reduce foot traffic, that can cripple our businesses. This discussion is a disappointment to those of us who envision a vibrant and forward-thinking community, and I hope that any amendments to our ordinances will lean towards making our community welcome to our food vendors. Some of these ways may include closing off some of the streets, food truck parks like they have in Portland and in Los Angeles, and maybe even opening up the alleyways that have access to some of our businesses along that side. Again, I just really hope that you guys consider that we enjoy the experience, we're bringing money downtown, and we want our neighbors' businesses to survive. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Teri Hendricks, Joseph Elmhurst, and Ryan Dickerson, the next three. Teri, the next one.
Hi, I'm Teri Hendricks Herman, I've lived here for 22 years, I am a registered active voter. I, we go to downtown and enjoy the food trucks and the food vendors, what we've noticed since it's become so restrictive for the food vendors is the business is dying off, it's noticeable on a Friday and Saturday night. We like the diversity of the food, everything that you said about the food, bringing business and helping our new brew pubs and our tap houses, very true. What I like to suggest is to lower the fees to get licenses for these food trucks and the pop-up stops. I know that it's become almost prohibitive now after the led, the late, the last legislation passed, for the street vendors, it's taken away a lot of people coming to downtown, it was thriving, and then I understand needing laws, but it kind of cripples that. Maybe, you've got to get rid of the 10-minute limit, that, that's, that's gotta go, and maybe close a block of downtown, I've lived in different cities where they just close it off on Friday, Saturday night, or Sunday afternoons, where, what are we using gourmet alley for? Maybe Sunday afternoons to bring people down there on Sundays, Fridays and Saturdays, 5 to 10, having first come, first served, please don't over-regulate it. If they show up on time, like, we go and see the Papusa Lady, we love their food, California Inspirations, another local family, but they don't have the money for a truck, and now they can no longer be, these are people who are in our community, they go to our schools, they pay their taxes, so I would urge you to look back on that and reflect upon those laws, that they may not have served us just. So I would urge you to look back on that and reflect upon those laws, that they may not have served us just as well.
All right, well, thank you. Thank you. All right, Joseph, followed by Ryan.
Hi, my name is Joseph Elmhurst. I open, I run two food trucks. I come from Hollister. We recently went through this exact ordinance, and so I really implore you guys to reach out to them. We came up very, with very innovative solutions. We talk about perpendicular parking, diagonal parking, two-hour, four-hour, all-day permits, and we kind of package them all together. In fact, we went even further to work with our downtown association, me personally working with them, in order to open up food truck alley. And we just successfully gotten through our very first five-week stint where we brought in between 800 to 1,000 people in our little tiny town of Hollister every single week to support our food trucks. When I started, there was one or two. Now we've got an abundant culture of food trucks. We all know what we're doing. We also know the law. One of the biggest problems of what you, what we're facing right now, and the reason why we're not getting the, you're not getting the permits that you guys need, is because of the way this thing is written. It is so confusing for us to know what we can and can't do. Why bother, you know? Why don't you guys update this idea and make it clear to say, yeah, you can park here from, you know, for two hours, but you have to leave in that two hours, you got to move 100 feet, or that four-hour period, or whatever it is you guys come up with. We will apply and get those permits. We want to be in compliance with the city. We really do. But it's up to you guys to make it clear so that we know, and, you know, we know what to do. Okay? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, Ryan Dickerson.
My name is Ryan Dickerson. I own Bitter Tap House right there on Second and Monterey. I've seen a lot of people here, excuse me, a lot of people here, a lot of food trucks. I've visited my establishment. I think we're on the right track as far as being in compliance, and I think we're all on the same, the same track as far as diversity. One thing our city lacks is diversity. And with these food trucks rolling in, as you see in all these other cities, it attracts a lot of people. One suggestion I, I hope you guys take into consideration, it's, you know, with one of the, a designated area for food trucks, where would that leave my establishment if food trucks are, can only go to one spot? You know, the, you know, how do I, how do I state this? You know, there's a clear difference when I have a food truck at my establishment and when there's not. So I just hope, you know, you guys take into consideration the location of these establishments that want food trucks there, and like Joseph said, you know, make the permitting process a little bit more streamlined, a little bit easier to read. I'm not going to be dead horse, you know, and keep reiterating, you know, how, making the, the, you know, the language a little bit more clear so people can look at it and say, okay, I needed X, Y, and Z, as opposed to looking at it and be overwhelmed. Because I've been through the permitting process. I, you know, from 2020 to 2022, I was in the permitting process with the city, and it's very confusing if you don't know, you know, what you're looking at and how to understand it. But I think we are, we are on the right track, just a little, you know, a few tweaks to a lot of things because me, these guys right here, a lot of people benefit from these food trucks that don't have an in-house kitchen. So that's kind of all I have to say, and I hope we take the right steps and not exclude anybody from, from what's going on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next would be Alex Carlino, and then Raj, and Matthew.
All right, so I emailed in my comment, but I'll read it back. So I, I wrote in to express my strong support for the continued presence of the food trucks. And the food trucks, they offer a lot of diverse opportunities and options for everybody who's coming to downtown to have different food and also provide a lot of opportunities for small business owners that can't necessarily do a brick and mortar or just prefer to be mobile. I provided suggestions in my, my comment, and the first one is simplifying the application procedure. If we want to have these people come and be part of our community, make it easy. There's no point in making it extremely difficult, and simplifying the process will definitely expedite getting these people who want to comply to do so. Clear communication, which is just, also falls in line with simplification, and collaboration with the public health department. If we're requiring way more than what Santa Clara County is requiring, and that's diverting people who are saying, well, this is way too much work. We're not going to come here. Maybe if it's good enough for Santa Clara County, maybe it's good enough for us. And then the final suggestion that I made was for flexible locations, and that's reviewing where we do it and allowing, allowing these people to come to certain establishments and maybe establishing more ownership between the actual people, the businesses that are inviting them, and I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. Matthew, followed by, wait, no, Raj. Raj Sharma, yeah.
Hi, I'm Raj Sharma, mayor, council members, thank you for this time. I did, like I said, I don't want to beat a dead horse. I think we've all been saying pretty much the same thing. But I was here to come to war, and it was very encouraging to see a lot of council members here on our side, on the side of the food trucks. I do want to say this, is that the previous ordinance was a unanimous vote. It was definitely rushed. It wasn't well thought out, and we immediately saw the effects. The entire downtown is a ghost town. And so I encourage you all to take your time, look at every nooks and crannies, look at what you need to do to make this successful. It's not complicated. It really isn't. We don't need creative ideas. We don't need another hurdle for food trucks to get to. They're already going to the county. They're already getting the health permits. They're already getting a commissary. They're already getting the sanitation. Just require a permit, require them to be at a certain time, and simple as that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Matthew Gallian, and then Alicia Hernandez. Alicia, oh, there you are.
Hello again.
Hello.
Yes, as we've heard from everybody else, there's a lot of support for food trucks and for the business that it brings to downtown. So again, I would just encourage you to methodically take the time to go through every bit of information, to make the process streamlined and simple. Unfortunately, with our sidewalk vendors, I feel that it was rushed, and in one fell swoop, we killed a large majority of life in downtown. And we're seeing the impacts, and we'll see the impacts to come for a long time. Until the proper amount of food establishments are in downtown, we need these other businesses to supplement that and to attract people to downtown, and to hopefully, for a restaurant to say, wow, people like food down there. I think I'll put my food business down there, and I'll open up that brick and mortar, and I'll fill one of the many vacancies that we have in our buildings down there. So again, I would just encourage you to take the time, you know, don't rush into anything, think it out, and make the community proud with whatever you come up with. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Alicia?
Hello, good evening. My name is Alicia Hernandez. I've lived in Gilroy all my life. When this ordinance was established, back in 97, 26 years ago, downtown was, from what I remember, Dick Brun's clothing, Mafalda's, I think we had Salvation Army where the art store is. Times have changed. I'm happy to hear that the majority of council is in agreements of updating this city code. What Mr. Brockle was saying, I don't think you need to reinvent the wheel as far as ordinances. City, just a few miles south, north of us, they have food trucks. They have a pretty, I don't want to say lenient, but it's easy for food trucks to get approved. You said there were two food trucks approved last year. Per whose standards? The cities or the counties? You have three pending. How long is it going to take for those to be processed per the city's ordinance? Are they going to be hanging out for months? So I, I really think that you need to expedite this process and updating this code because there's resources out there that you can utilize to update this code, in my opinion, pretty promptly. And if you want to hear people's feedback other than these meetings, I would advise you do a workshop with the public coming and give them their two cents of input. Because these people right here, they've, they've established this hype around downtown, the vibe. I want to go down there with my kids. But you approve them without food, this is their solution of having food in front of their establishments. They're grandfathered into being approved without food. I know you want to reintroduce code so that establishments serving alcohol need to have food, but right now you need to act and help them out, so I can help support them. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I see no other speakers. Are there any others?
No, there are speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay, and closing pub that you, you, yeah, we're, I'm not closing it yet, so if you want to come up and speak, go ahead.
Thank you very much. So my name is Daniel Hill.
One moment, sir. Let me turn on this timer.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
My name is Daniel Hill. I live, and thank you for letting me speak. I opened a business a few years ago. I've been to these establishments, some of them near them, if not another vendors, other breweries.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Sure.
Okay, yeah.
And basically, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but you guys did rush the sidewalk vending, which eliminated my business, which is, you know, okay. But, and I still work with the city on other events, so I just did one last week, and it's great. But I don't see how we could do those events, special events, and I know there's, there's, you know, documents for that or whatever, but we could do the special events, but we can't do the side, the type of sidewalk vending. I know that's separate, I totally get it, but it's just kind of weird how I can go to an event on a Saturday, do it with the city, and it's all planned, but I can't just go get a permit and do it in front of the business like I just did Saturday. So again, not to go back with the sidewalk vending, but, you know, I really like what you guys are doing right now and then supporting this trailer, the food trucks and everything coming in. I think that it definitely needs to be thought out, such as, you know, he said, that it should be really thought out and not just in one spot. And maybe one spot is great, but not all the time. Maybe spread them out to all the vendors in the area, all the, sorry, businesses in the area or breweries. It's something that really needs to be, you know, worked over and thought out, and permits and everything. Don't make it so hard and expensive for us. I mean, I plan to get a food truck soon, but don't make it so hard and expensive for us to just say, forget it. I'm going to go to a different city, because in that case, what's the purpose of coming in and having to be so expensive? But again, thank you guys for talking about it. Thank you for bringing it up, and thank you guys, these guys here and all the other ones for coming in and supporting. And I hope you guys do come up with some really good resolution.
Thank you. Okay, I am going to close public comment and bring this back to the city council for discussion. So I see Councilmember Armandares up first. Go ahead. I, I appreciate the, all the, the business owners and vendors who are here tonight spending their time and lending their voice and letting us know how we messed up and how we can do better. But my question for council is, is what's the difference? Why all of a sudden do we have so much enthusiasm and support for, for vendors? Because they're in trucks versus the vendors that are sidewalk, that were sidewalk vendors? They, they, I think we have to look at equity as we write this. I don't want anybody to feel that this prohibits them, right? It should be welcoming, and it should be welcoming for everyone. Like, what's the difference between our sidewalk vendors and these, and these truck, food truck vendors? Why are we, why the difference? Why the change? You know, I, I can't help but notice, and, and I wonder what, what's the difference in the character and how these people look and the other vendors looked and what they bring to downtown and what these vendors bring to downtown? You know, like they said, we now have a downtown that is crickets. You know, you hear crickets compared to the way, how lively it was when we had sidewalk vendors. And I'm, I'm, I support a, a welcoming and streamlined permit process for these truck vendors and hope that we can revisit that of our sidewalk vendors because, you know, they add to the character of our community. They add to the foot traffic and the prosperity of our downtown businesses. Yeah, that's it. Councilmember Marks?
Yes, I, this is just a report, correct? And we're going to give direction to staff? So I would like staff to come back with what Hollister has done, Morgan Hill has done, where, you know, ask the questions of what was the bare necessity of licenses needed in order to run a food truck? Come back with some solutions on, or ideas, I should say, on times when food trucks would be allowed to be present on the street, closing the street versus parking actually down on Monterey Street. And I'd really like to go around, and maybe over the next week, I might go around to some of the tap rooms and talk to everyone and say, as an owner, you know, what, what do you want to see? Do we want to close a block? Do we want to use Gourmet Alley? Do we want to try, you know, I want just, I want lots of ideas of what other cities are doing so we can do a really good, intense study to come up with the best solution. And I just want to respond real quickly to Councilmember Armandares. One of the main complaints I think some of the businesses had, and it was all businesses, just not restaurants, was the messes that were left behind. And that was the main complaint. And sidewalk vending can still happen, they just have to go ahead and apply for the licenses, and they are welcome to be downtown.
Customers can be just as messy outside of a food truck versus a sidewalk vendor. This is Councilmember Marks.
And then in response to like Bitter on Second Street, you're out of the main core, so maybe staff wants to look at the main core between 4th and 6th, and then you have plenty of room on, on Second Street for your food truck. That should not even be an issue for you, you know, forcing you not
Not speak to specific people, please.
Okay, I know, I always do that.
I know.
All right, that's it. All right, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Klein, you're on here twice.
I would mirror what Carol said.
Okay.
And, you know, flexible locations, you have designated spaces, off-street parking options, just looking at different possibilities with, with the vendors.
Okay, Councilmember Tovar?
Yeah, so a couple of things. So solutions, because we're talking about solutions. And I, I'm on my phone, because my computer's going to die, so I'm using my email that I, so we, first of all, we need a new city ordinance because the one that we have is way outdated, right? So we have to get rid of that, obviously. And then allow these food trucks to lease city-owned parking spaces, obviously, is important as well, especially with the new, the new parking lot that we have. And again, you're looking at the permit process, the time. We should have a 10-day, one-week time limit to get back to the food vendors and let them know, and reduce fees if possible. So we have to look for solutions, obviously, that, that is going to be beneficial to both parties. And again, so just, and we can also, we can always regulate the way things go, but yet, as you're hearing, these food trucks are going to bring business to downtown, so we should look at it as a positive way. What can we do? And again, I'm saying that we're all in, you know, we're all on the same page, but let's start looking at solutions and not have a discussion and bring this back a month or two months from now. Let's figure out what we can do now and make it happen, so.
Okay, sorry, yes, Councilmember?
Yeah, I would like to see us look at Morgan Hill and Hollister's also. And I also would like, like us to remove it from the police department. I don't, I don't see why a cook and a food truck needs to get licensed through our police department. And I, I think we need to look at simplifying this. No way should they have to pay more than a brick and mortar for a business license. You know, my main concern is we need to make sure that they're, they're being regulated by the health department for safety reasons, and, you know, they're not on the sidewalks and that kind of thing. But I think, I think we should move forward with this. And I, I would also like to see staff meet with downtown and, and the owners of these trucks that are going to, want to come and come up with some solutions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I, I haven't spoken yet, so I'm going to go. Great. I would like, I agree that my direction to, to staff would be what I hear the majority saying, which is to come back with what Hollister and Morgan Hill, if they both already have something on the, I didn't know Morgan Hill did, I knew Hollister did, but if they already have something on the books for food trucks, I would like to see what that is. I would like to see suggestions
I would like to see suggestions for, I, I don't, I don't think I support gourmet alley because that's about to be redone and that's going to look a certain way and that's meant to be for pedestrians and not vehicles. So my personal opinion is that gourmet alley should not be where we look for this. But we certainly, I would direct staff to come back with some flexible locations for where, where this could happen. And both, I personally would like to be able to consider a particular place that could be on certain days, whether it's every Thursday, whether it's just Thurs, all Thursdays and Fridays, whatever it is, but a certain place. And I'd also like to see encroachment permits and how that would work. Because then, any establishment can use, they have to, of course, pay a fee for the encroachment, but that's only the way it should be. It shouldn't be that you, it's just first come, first served to public space. There should be a process for encroachment permits and that way it gives anybody the opportunity to consider having something right near their location. But it should also restrict the number of encroachment permits that can exist within a certain area. Like, you can't have more than so many within 50 feet of each other, or whatever the thing is, other than if you have a location where it's, it's supposed to be food truck alley, for example, as someone said. So I personally think looking at Hollister and Morgan Hill is good. I don't think we should be considering gourmet alley. I do think staff should come back with where we could have a food truck alley-type thing. And I think encroachment permits ought to be considered. And I agree that it shouldn't be under the police department because our sidewalk vending is not under police department, is it Jimmy? That's under community development? Right, so I would propose that it be under community development as well, with all the same restrictions, that it has to have a health department license and the same kind of city business license, and it would not be anywhere near what brick and mortar costs. But it would be whatever, whatever those requirements are. That would be my suggestion. Councilmember Tovar?
Yeah, thank you.
I'm on there too.
And, you're all on here again, so it's like, yeah, everybody's on here.
Jimmy, I have a question for you, Jimmy. In downtown, the city-owned parking lot that's where the Christmas tree went up, next to SEMA, tip, how many food trucks? Because I'm looking at a location, Mayor, you had mentioned not using gourmet alley, but it's going to be a while before that's even built, but looking at other places- Okay, well, we'll see about that. But anyhow, looking at that parking, that parking location, how many food trucks could we fit in there?
Thank you, Mr. Tovar. I don't have an exact number for you, but we are a little bit farther ahead than I think most people think we are. One, we started with the same places, I think councils right now, we're, we have a 97 ordinance for ice cream trucks. That doesn't apply to food trucks. So we are looking at several city-owned properties, including Fifth and Monterey, Seventh and Eagleberry, to see what the concept for a food truck park is. The second part that we're looking at is the establishment of food truck areas, whether that is a main road, a side street. And a lot of this stuff has been addressed in other cities. I would not use Morgan Hill as an example because they don't enforce and they don't have an active food truck program, actually.
I didn't think so, so I was, yeah.
Hollister definitely. So we are working on these ideas and some of the things that have been said, we already have our economic development manager looking at, so.
Perfect, yes.
On our way.
I would be in favor of what the mayor is recommending with the addition that the information that you bring back with regarding possible city-owned locations for food trucks.
Yeah, and when it comes to encroachments, that it be no more than a certain number within a certain distance.
Right.
So it's not just covered, okay. All right, now I'm going back to the board. I have Councilmember Klein on here first. Did you, you're okay. Councilmember Armendaris?
Yeah. In addition, I know that Modesto has a, the city has partnerships where they do food trucks, right? They have a thriving, like, food truck alley, what's the name of that, their main road? No, I'm, yeah, yeah, they're, they're evenings and it's like once a week and they do special parties and parades and stuff with their food trucks. So I'd like to, for us to look into how they partner together, right? And the fees that they charge. And then, somebody mentioned that the insurance requirements that want to list out of all the employees and things like that. And I didn't see that in, in the staff report, but I'm wondering, like, can we make sure that those type of things, those very restrictive and cumbersome, right, administrative requests aren't, aren't in our, our next policy draft?
To answer your question, Ms. Armendaris and also Mr. Barco, the reason why the police department had the ice cream truck was because it required a background investigation, as you can tell. See, the presentation was given by seat administration, so we will be taking this program on and then we can look at ice cream trucks separately because of the access to children. But a lot of these provisions from 1997, we would not recommend going forward with.
Okay. Councilmember Tovar and then Councilmember Marks? Oh, Councilmember Marks?
All right, one more suggestion to staff. I, I particularly would not like to see our food trucks put into a certain time limit. But, you know, like, every hour they had to move, every two hours, maybe keep them there. If they are there for the evening, they're there for the evening, whatever the city comes up with, you know, as a time designation. So, you know, probably a minimum of four hours, I would say, or whatever.
That would be part of the, like, encroachment, right? Okay. Right, that would all be part of that.
Also, I would like to see a staff report back to us in January. Just, you know, because you're just basically finding out what's going on with other cities and you come up with some, if our downtown committee- Well, if our downtown committee can go and call cities and, and get information, the staff can too. And we did it with all having other jobs to do, so.
My responsibility, Marks, is what would you like me to drop from the agenda in January?
Add.
Add this to it.
Oh, I need to drop something.
Why?
Because our January is packed.
It is packed, but so what? We have till 11. I, this, this would be a report out back to us, to see if we liked it or not.
You're talking about staff capacity, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
It's okay, in the meantime, there's just nothing we're enforcing, so it's not causing any problem. We can enforce what we don't have to enforce, so that's fine.
Well, can I ask you-
I think we, we do have a consensus, though, I think, on a direction, which is very nice.
But let me ask this question, so, thank you, Councilmember Marks. I would like something in January as well, but if that's not doable, what timeframe are we looking at to get something on the agenda?
I don't have the whole council matrix in front of me. I don't know how long this takes, I don't know exactly what we're diving into, so I wouldn't want to-
Okay, well, I'll offer a suggestion.
It stays as it is until then, guys.
All right, no, but I'm offering a suggestion. I'm not sure what you're getting at.
And my co-chair over there might, might confer with me. We could assign a subcommittee in January that's already finished one of their topics in the downtown committee to do some groundwork for staff to make phone calls. Would that be acceptable? Then we could report back to you and then staff could take it and run with it later on.
Can we do that if it's not addendized right now?
Well, no, I'm just saying we would addendize it in January, but if that's acceptable to help them out, so this can be done sooner rather than later.
Point of order, can we add that to an ad hoc agenda? At this meeting if it's not addendized tonight?
We can't appoint a subcommittee that is an agenda, as the council members correct.
Yeah, I think we should leave it alone. I think what we're saying is, nothing's going to change until we get to this. So I'm not sure what the sense of, of harm is.
And it's winter, like, well, I just, I don't know.
I mean, food trucks work in the wintertime.
Yeah.
I just think, so they're being unregulated right now, is what I'm saying.
Right.
They're unregulated, so.
So I guess what we're saying is, we want to get it rolling, so hopefully by April or May, all this is ironed out because realistically, I don't see it happening any sooner. I don't want us to go into the summer months with nothing being done.
Okay.
I think if staff comes back with templates from other cities, I think that'll make it, that can expedite the process for us.
Yeah, just sort of clarification, and I, you, you've mentioned it a couple times. They're unregulated currently.
Right.
So, nothing is going to happen until-
Yeah, nobody's been going after this 10-minute thing.
Right, what I'm saying is, moving forward, we're going to continue to not regulate this until we come back with a-
We don't have anything to regulate.
Right, that's how it was with the sidewalk vending. Until we could, and then even when we passed it. It was 30 days after that and then had to be the whole education process, so, yeah. Okay, clear enough? All right, that brings us to item 11.3. I'm tempted to take a break, but maybe we can motor through, I don't know. Can we take a break?
Yeah.
LeAnn, can we just take five minutes? Okay, let's just take five minutes, everybody. Okay, I think we can, we're going to go ahead and get started. Guys, we're, we're back in session, okay? We're on 11.3. LeAnn's going to give us a report on the reorganization of facilities and fleet divisions in the Administrative Services Department.
Good evening, council, and members of the public that are still with us this evening. I know it's been a long night, so I will try to keep it short and sweet. But this item before you tonight is a reorganization of the facilities and fleet divisions in the Administrative Services Departments. And so, we've been having difficulty recruiting and keeping a fleet superintendent. I think just fleet managers are a bit of a dying breed and we just have not seen a good applicant pool for this particular recruitment. So currently, our fleet, our facility superintendent, Walter, who's here tonight, has been graciously covering both facilities and fleet functions in order to help keep the work covered and to give the employees and manager to report up into. But because we've had difficulty with this recruitment and we're not seeing any, any prosperous candidates in the near horizon, we started talking about what, how else could we do this? Is there a different way to accomplish what we need to accomplish? And so, from those conversations, we came up with a suggested reorganization plan. The staff report lists out how the two divisions are staffed now. And since that's merged into the chart up on the screen, which is also in the staff report, I'm not going to repeat that. But basically, we're, the suggestion is to eliminate the fleet superintendent position, combine the facility superintendent to be a facilities and fleet superintendent, which will have a cost of about $23,000. The savings from the fleet superintendent position results in $145,000 in savings. Currently, we have three facilities maintenance specialists that work on all of our city facilities and keep our facilities maintained. We're suggesting that we convert one of those positions up to a senior facilities maintenance specialist, gives an advancement opportunity to one of our teammates. And that person would be able to help out Walter, who's going to have more to do by taking on the senior role, take on more complex assignments, take some things off of Walter's desk. And then, the only other change would be converting, there's two other changes, converting our part-time office assistant that supports fleet and facilities, converting that to a full-time management assistant. That would give the two divisions a dedicated administrative support person to handle all of the admin paperwork that runs through these two divisions. There's a lot of purchasing that goes on, a lot of contracts and a lot of different things. And having a full-time, dedicated management assistant will really make it possible for Walter to oversee both divisions and get the work done. And, and then to give fleet a little bit of support, we're suggesting a part-time assistant equipment mechanic who would assist the current team of mechanics with, you know, some of the more entry-level, simple tasks, tires, oil changes, taking a vehicle for a smog check. Oh, this car needs to go to the car wash. Oh, this car needs to get picked up at PD and brought back to the yard. We don't need to take the time of one of our equipment mechanics to do those kinds of functions. And this would create some succession planning for someone to potentially move up and we could groom them to be an equipment mechanic for us at some point in the future. So, overall, the cost of the changes and the additions are offset by the savings of the elimination of the fleet superintendent. And at the end of the day, we end up with savings of $52,81 per year. So we think this is a, a way to move forward, a way to cover all the functions of the work that needs to be done, provide some advancement opportunities and some job enrichment for our city staff. And we think it's a win-win overall. So we're asking you tonight to approve the reorganization and then adopt the resolution to approve the position control list that incorporates these changes. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thanks, LeAnn. All right, councilmembers, questions? Councilmember Tovar?
Thank you, thank you, LeAnn, for that. And just looking at this, so, in the end, we're still, it's, before the reorder, you had 10 staff members and now we're sticking with 10. But we're just kind of adding responsibility to-
Well, we had nine and we're, well, nine and a half and we're going to end up with 10 and a half.
10 and a half, right.
Well, no, sorry, it's going to be nine, it's nine and a half, nine and a half.
Right.
Because this one's being eliminated.
Yeah, sorry, I meant nine and a half, 10.
Yeah.
And just, but certain individuals, certain staff members will have additional responsibilities, right?
Correct.
And again, it's maybe not a concern, I just maybe more of, you know, making sure that with these added responsibilities, are they going to have the bandwidth? If currently, we always hear that we don't have enough bandwidth, I just want to make sure that that's not what we're going to hear six months from now.
Well, Walter here will tell you, that was the first thing I talked to him about, was there's no way he has the bandwidth without these other changes. So, in order for this to be successful and him, for him to be able to manage the two divisions like he's doing now, right now, he's, he, you know, he's running around with the chicken with his head cut off some days and, and it's, and it's a lot. But if he has a senior facilities maintenance specialist and he has a full-time management assistant and then we add the part-time person in the fleet shop, that makes it more doable.
So, so, and so in turn, what's going to happen, obviously, it's, the added responsibility is doable, but also, there won't be any negative effects with this reorder.
I don't think so. And I think it's going to be a positive change for staff. You know, Walter's excited about taking on a new opportunity. It's going to create an advancement opportunity for one of our facilities maintenance specialists. We're going to hire a new management assistant. The current part-time office assistant is vacant. And then getting the extra help in the fleet shop, the win-win, win-win.
Thank you, thank you, LeAnn.
Councilmember Barco?
LeAnn, on a day-to-day basis, who's going to be over at the fleet shop saying, take this truck in, do this, do that?
If you see, on, on the chart, we have a senior equipment mechanic. So we have a lead mechanic in the shop who, that's what he does every morning. He looks at what, what we got on our plate, what's coming in, what needs to happen. Here's what he's going to do, here's what the other two mechanics are going to do. He's going to also then assign to the assistant mechanic. And then he meets with Walter to, to look at the bigger picture and hear about any, you know, special things that need to be addressed, any changes to the work plan, you know, that need to be handled that week, those kinds of things. But we do have a lead mechanic in the shop.
Well, if he can do the job, then what do you need to give it to Walter for?
Because there's a lot of office work that goes with this job. There's a lot of management work that goes with this job. Purchasing of vehicles, just the purchasing of vehicles in and of itself is a, a big workload. Getting the quotes, getting the bids, putting that all together, checking out the vehicles with the departments, making sure we're, we're complying with regulations. We've got some electric vehicle requirements, we have to have green vehicle requirements in place. There's just, we have the fuel island. There's a lot of things outside of the shop that the superintendent has to manage and oversee.
And a facilities person could step in and take care of that?
Well, Walter is, has some unique skills because he came to us from Gilroy Gardens and when he was at Gilroy Gardens, he supervised the ride mechanics and the fleet mechanics that supported Gilroy Gardens. So he has some experience in that area and he's been doing a good job getting things moved down the road while he's been doing the temporary assignment while the position's been vacant. You're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay, do we have any members of the public wishing to speak?
I have no speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay, closing public comment and looking for a motion. Okay, moved by Councilmember Tovar, seconded by Councilmember Armendaris for both approving the reorganization of facilities and fleet and adopting a resolution approving the updated position control list.
Councilmember Armendaris? Councilmember Barco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley?
Yes, that passes unanimously with one absent.
Thank you.
All right, so city administrators' reports.
Just real quickly, Madam Mayor, I wanted to thank everybody for a, a great event on Saturday. But I wanted to also give a shout-out to our Public Works operations folks. They don't have the horses or the fire engine, but they really made that show and they were everywhere. If you saw, we used Public Works vehicles to block roads for safety, so I was really proud of them. Got to talk to quite a few of them and they just really, they were there and most people didn't notice, so I'm going to give them a little love. That concludes my report.
But afterwards, the committee did not have enough resources to act, to take the garbage where it was supposed to go. And Public Works, those men, came up and said, we will do it. Load into our truck, we will dispose. And the committee was just really bragging about them, how wonderful they actually were. And I hope you praise them for it tomorrow and say, thank you.
That doesn't surprise me at all, Ms. Marks, thank you.
Yay. All right, city attorneys' reports.
No report.
All right, then with that, we are adjourned at 9:14 PM.